I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of October 20th, 2025 to order. It's 7:03 PM. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom as always, and it can be accessed through our Packet Agenda. There's a call-in Zoom link, and then there's also a simple telephone call-in at the bottom of the Agenda as well, if you're not accessing via a computer. So I'd like to start by taking roll call as I see you. Chris Doughty.
Doughty here.
Rich Guzzardi.
Guzzardi present.
Cindy Markwitz.
Markwitz present.
And I am going to call for Mark White. I'll see him. Okay, so and Werner.
White present.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Mark White's present. Thank you. So full board. Okay, it's, first we'll start out by taking public comment. If anyone has any comment from the public that is not about something that is currently listed on the Agenda topics, please go ahead and raise your hand, or you can also press star nine via telephone. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comment. That's 7:04. Maybe we can go ahead and get some meeting minutes. Alec taken off the table?
Will do.
Thank you. Does anyone have comments on the October 6th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I thought I did. But I'm not. Somebody else wants to go? Go ahead.
Any comments, folks?
Hang on, I'm just reviewing my version. No, I don't have any comments.
Rich, anything else? Or did you find any?
No, I think I'm good. I just, I saw one little thing, but no, it's.
I entertain a motion to approve the October 6th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks. Moved by Rich, seconded by Chris. Roll call as I see you. Rich Guzzardi.
Guzzardi, aye.
Cindy Markwitz.
Markwitz, aye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
And Mark White.
White, aye.
And Werner, aye. Thank you very much. Okay, ticked that off. It's 7:05. So we'll head and open the public hearing for 984 and 996 Massachusetts Ave. And 38 Sarah's Way Site Plan Review and Stormwater Management Permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw 2.5 Site Plan Approval and the Boxborough Stormwater Bylaw, the Boxborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing to review the application submitted by Level Design Group LLC on behalf of the applicant 894 Massachusetts Ave LLC for a proposed landscape contractor yard. Mark White, do you need to recuse?
Yeah, so I need to recuse myself. I'm an abutter to the property and I've also filed a disclosure with the town. So I will participate in this as a, as in a butter, but anything I say is not part of being part of the board.
Thank you, Mark.
Judy, can you unassign Mark as a co-host, please?
Okay, I'm assuming there is an applicant here to provide a bit of a presentation. Or Alec, did you want to do any reporting beforehand before they jump in?
No, so I will leave it to the applicant to describe their project. The applicant is represented tonight by Paul Robertson and Nick Fassendola, and I believe the applicant as well is here, Luis Gutierrez.
Perfect. Welcome. Who will be speaking here?
Madam Chair, Paul Robertson, Attorney for the submitting party. I've been asked to make just a brief opening statement about the property. This was a property that was purchased by Mr. Gutierrez. This is one of several properties that he's owned in the town of Boxborough. He purchased this particular property after doing due diligence, conferring with both the town planner and the building commissioner, and then obtaining a formal opinion of zoning, which provided, and I quote, "That the land located at 984 Massachusetts Avenue", which is this land here, "can be used to process trees as is being done at 871 Massachusetts Avenue." And based upon that written opinion from the building commissioner, he then paid a premium for this property. In October of 2023, he engaged in some maintenance of the property where he, for safety purposes, cleared away some mud and also removed some trees, which were, without dispute, less than one acre of trees. Nonetheless, the abutter to the property, who happens to be a member of the Planning Board and the ZBA, had complained about the issue. And both the town planner and the building commissioner then inspected the site and again opined that less than one acre had been disturbed. Nonetheless, the matter was escalated. There was subsequently a second opinion from the building commissioner after the issue of whether pre-existing non-conforming use had been expanded. He then wrote that, in fact, that he could not conclude that there'd been any expansion. Nonetheless, after all that, in March of 2025, a letter was issued to the plaintiff here. I refer to him as a plaintiff because, as we know, there's an actual litigation going on. Mr. Gutierrez saying that he had expanded the use beyond the pre-existing non-conforming use and that he was obligated to file a site plan and for a special permit for the ZBA. And as we all, as you know, Madam Chair, we met with you and with the ZBA representative last November, and it was agreed that we'd let the litigation stay in abeyance while the applicant prepared a site plan for review. And then he was directly instructed that he was not to file with the ZBA until he got the site plan approval. He's been in the process of doing that since that meeting. He examined some other uses and then notified the town in April of this year that he was proceeding with his application, provided on May 1st a preliminary plan and received comments back in May. He then submitted his formal application site plan for review some time ago, and we're having this meeting after a request for delay by the town. I say all this out because my understanding of this had been that we were proceeding in good faith while the litigation proceeded in the background, but we've just received a motion to enforce. That's going on in the background. We're vigorously opposing that, but we're also discussing with counsel about the process here. We're hopeful that this site plan can go forward in good faith, that there is some recognition that this is being done, not because of the concession that more than an acre has been disturbed or that he's expanded his pre-existing use, but an attempt to reach an accord and submit that site plan for a comment by the Planning Board and then proceed to the ZBA. With that, Madam Chair, if you'll permit me, Nick Fassendola from Level 1 Design is here to walk through the presentation in detail and to answer any questions that you or the public may have about it.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson, Robertson, sorry. Yes, Nick, please, please go ahead.
All right, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Share the site plan, okay. Right. All right, so is the site plan showing on everybody's screen?
Yes, it is.
All right, very good. So for the record, Nick Fassendola from Level Design Group. We prepared the site plan, which was submitted to the Board, and the supporting documents that accompanied the site plan approval application and stormwater management permit application. So I'm sure the Board's very familiar with this site as you guys have been working actively to permit a site essentially directly across the street. So the property is located at 984 Massachusetts Avenue. We have approximately 4.2 acres of land, is what we're calling the site, and that is, and that consists of three separate parcels, which are all under common ownership. We have Lot 1 here, Lot 2A, and Lot 3A. So on this property, there's a zoning divide. So this area right through here, the zoning from this area to the right, that's all Business 1 zoning district. And everything to the left, this small area here, and this back bump out is industrial. As you can see here, this is our existing conditions plan. On the property, there's an existing small, single-family dwelling. The property, the dwelling is currently vacant. There's no intent to reuse that structure as a residential dwelling. The applicant would like to make some exterior repairs to improve aesthetics and then utilize the structure as a dry storage. There's also an existing barn located in this area here. It's about 2,400 square feet. The barn is in disrepair, but the applicant believes he can save a large portion of it, and he would like to do some repairs to the barn to save that structure. Other structures on the site include a concrete pad located adjacent to the existing barn, located in this area here. And then the remainder of the site is primarily gravel ground cover. There are some wooded areas along the perimeter and along the front of the property, along Massachusetts Avenue in this area here. There are no onsite wetland or resource areas, but we do have some identified BBW across Massachusetts Avenue for which we'll need to file with conservation for as we proceed with our permitting process. There are no other areas of concern, you know, natural heritage. There's no groundwater protection areas or anything of that nature, strictly just the BBW across the street. So as Attorney Robertson stated, the applicant is working under the assumption that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Previously here was a wood processing facility operated by Mr. Larry White, where logs were brought to the site processed. He had a wood mill, milling facility in the barn. They did some chipping operations. And what the applicant is proposing today is to extend that use to his current facility, as Paul described, but with making some substantial improvements to the property for safety, for circulation, and for stormwater management. So I'll go through some of the initial improvements that the applicant is looking to make at the site. So we'll start here with the entrance off of, this is Sarah's Way here. There are three small driveways on Sarah's Way. There's one that serviced the existing residential dwelling. There's a second that is the primary access to the yard area. And there's a third access further up Sarah's Way that provides secondary access to the yard. We're looking to close off the first and third access points to the site and improve this main entry driveway. So we're going to do some re-grading to allow for better access for trucks to enter and exit the site. And we'd also are proposing to pave approximately 80 feet, 80 to 90 feet of the driveway apron here. And that's to prevent gravel from the yard area from entering into Sarah's Way. So we'll have a paved apron along the front here. The applicant's proposing to maintain this existing concrete pad area. And to the north of it, we're looking to add a second paved area where vehicles and tree removal equipment will be stored when not in use. So by having this paved area, we're able to have curbing around it and provide additional safety measures for those parked vehicles. I'll get into those additional details when I describe the stormwater management system, but having those vehicles on a paved surface, it's easier to monitor if there's oil leaks or hydraulic fluid leaks or anything of that nature. So all the vehicles which are not in use will be parked on a paved pad in this area here. This allows for, I believe we have 12 50-foot-long spaces, which can handle majority of the tree removal equipment that the applicant owns and operates. As we progress down to the south of the site, we're proposing a logs, dedicated log storage area in this area of the site here. And then as we look to the center of the site, we're going to have a wood chipping operation, which will be located in the center of the parcel here, where that'll include the placement of the wood chipper and temporary stockpile of chips. You know, a large part of the applicant's business is that he hauls logs in, chips them, stores them temporarily, and then transports those chips to a biomass fuel-burning power plant. So the chips aren't for resale. He doesn't convert them to colored bark mulch or do any processing of that nature. He solely brings the logs in or chips from any job where he has, you know, done like maybe a small residential job and has done some chipping at that site. The trucks come, dump any chips that they've collected or logs, and then those logs are processed into wood chips, they're temporarily stockpiled, and then they're hauled off to the end place, which is typically a biomass burning fuel plant. There's one in Fitchburg he works with, but there are also other plants in the area that he also works with. This area here is a riprap slope. So there's an existing relatively steep slope, two-to-one grade, right through here, that exists today, that's covered by stump grindings. The slope is relatively stable. We have no concerns with that slope, but as part of the proposed site improvements, we're looking to relocate that slope a little bit closer to this existing property line, still maintaining approximately a 10-foot gap between the toe of the slope and the property line, and then resurfacing that with something a little bit more stable and permanent, such as riprap. So this area here is all proposed to be a riprap. This dark dotted line here, this is the limits of what we're proposing for ground cover of the yard area. So right now it's crushed stone or stone dust. And what we found is that material produces a lot of dust during the dry season and when the vehicles are moving around. We're proposing to remove that and install asphalt tailings in this area here. The asphalt tailings or recycled asphalt will be a better ground cover for the site as they won't produce nearly as much dust as what's currently there, especially during the drier summer months. Along the property line here, we're proposing some sort of visual barrier. I've specified concrete blocks to be installed along this property line here. And that's to ensure that the log storage pile doesn't migrate off the property and that the, there's a well-defined line of where the border of the property is. Currently, some of the activities from the operation are located on the abutting property to the south here. The applicant is currently in the process of removing a large wood chip or stump grindings pile that exists in this area today in preparation to solely operate on their own property. Down here in this open area shown here, we'll be proposing a stormwater management basin. But that's essentially the general site improvement. So main highlights here are closing off two of these existing drives from Sarah's Way, new surface covering for the gravel, for the yard area, removing the gravel, putting down the recycled asphalt to help manage dust, installing a new paved area for parking of equipment and trucks associated with the tree removal business that are at the site, designating identified area for wood chipping operations and log storage. All right, so this is our grading and utilities plan. There's really no utilities other than stormwater proposed for this, calling it a redevelopment as the site's primarily developed here. So currently today, there are no onsite stormwater management practices. Everything, a large portion of the site flows unchecked down through here to the south, so excuse me, southwest, and then flows off-site to an off-site wetland, which is into the wooded area over in this area here. About a quarter of the site drains towards Massachusetts Avenue. So everything from this area here, kind of high point, and then down here drains towards Mass Ave, Sarah's Way and Mass Ave. There's an existing catch basin in Massachusetts Avenue right here, which direct discharges across the street towards the BBW. And there's a, there's two catch basins in the Mass Ave right away here, which collect everything from Mass Ave and from the site and the abutting parcel that run off the site. We're proposing two new onsite stormwater management basins. One is located in this area here, which will accept runoff from this paved pad, this existing concrete pad portion of the existing barn area here. Everything's going to drain to a new catch basin. That catch basin then is connected to a second structure where we'll have a valve installed on the drain line. So if there were any fuel spills, oil leaks, or anything of that nature, people onsite can go into that structure and close that valve and ensure that none of that spilled oil or fuel makes its way to the proposed infiltration basin. Infiltration basin is relatively straightforward. We have one pipe coming in. Water will infiltrate to the maximum extent practical based on soil conditions. And then we have riprap spillway overflow and then one small piped outlet to help manage peak flows running towards this basin. For the remainder of the site, which is draining, we'll say to the south and southwest, all that runoff will be collected at the top of that riprap slope I was previously describing in a riprap swale with check dams, which is located in this area. I'll zoom in a little bit here. Right through here, so we have a graded swale, which is sized to accommodate runoff from this large portion of the site. Everything then travels through the swale and then enters a catch basin, which is here, and then makes its way down the steep slope with a few drops, which are provided through two drainage manholes. And then that pipe discharges to a sediment for bay. And then that for bay overflows towards the proposed infiltration basin. Standard infiltration basin, we have a, you know, a few pipes for managing peak flows, and we have a overflow spillway. A great improvement for what's currently not there. As detailed, there are no existing onsite stormwater management practices. There's nothing, you know, providing groundwater infiltration. There's nothing providing removal of suspended solids. So we feel that these improvements for the redevelopment of the site are a great improvement and address a majority of the requirements of the stormwater management bylaw for redevelopment site. Overall site grading, we're just going to clean it up a little bit as we install the asphalt tailings. You know, define some high points and breaks, so there'll be a drainage break right up through here. And then we're isolating flow for this area right through here to make sure that there's a good drainage divide for flow that's traveling, that we want to travel to that, this new catch basin here. And the remainder is graded, so it all enters the swale. So those are the stormwater management improvements. There is an existing cesspool onsite that'll be abandoned in accordance with Title V requirements. And there's an existing well adjacent to the existing small residential dwelling. We've started conversations with the Board of Health to convert that to an irrigation well, which will provide water at the site for managing dust during the chipping operations. And we'll get into additional details on that shortly. Provide an erosion and sediment control plan, relatively straightforward. Perimeter erosion controls in the form of, we have a straw wattle with erosion control fence around the perimeter and downslope areas of the work area. Gravel construction entrance in this area where the primary site entrance is. Once a majority of the work's completed, that gravel entrance will be removed and the pavement will be installed. And then, you know, just calling out for installation of silt sacks within any of the existing catch basins in Mass Ave and the proposed basins on the site here. Landscape plan, we understand the requirements for landscaping, especially adjacent to Route 111, Massachusetts Avenue. You know, the idea here was to infill areas on the higher grade side to provide additional screening to these existing trees, which I've been identified on the existing condition survey. So we have plantings along the top of this slope here in this area here, next to the existing dwelling. And we're proposing plantings at the base where we have to do a little bit of work to install our stormwater management basin through here. And then we're proposing some plantings along this side of the proposed, or the existing slope here. I'm not going to get into the planting species. We had some comments from the town's consulting engineer. So, you know, we took, we saw those comments and are in the process of working with a landscape architect to prepare a new updated landscape plan addressing a lot of those comments. So a lot of the species here will be changed per the comments made by places. So, you know, we'll be working on that in our revised plan submission as we address comments which have come in from places engineering. But we're more than happy to discuss any number of plantings, locations, things like that with the Board as we move forward. So that is essentially the site plan. Sorry, my Adobe is kind of acting funny on me here. Go back up. Oh, boy. Apologies for the technical difficulties. Apologies for the technical difficulties. Help me reopen the site plan. Okay. So other items that we wanted to bring to the board's attention from discussions we've had with planning staff and a site meeting we had earlier this week, or excuse me, late last week, are some items regarding operations at the facility, specifically chipping operations and how we're going to manage, you know, any dust that's produced from the chipping operation, noise levels from the chipping operation. So we'll start with working and addressing the concerns of dust with regards to the chipping operations. What we're proposing is to, as I detailed, upgrade the ground cover within the yard area. Removing that peystone or that gravel is, we feel is going to drastically improve conditions with dust being churned up from equipment driving over that type of surface. And then also during chipping operations, once we have the well converted to an irrigation well, the applicant would be using large sprinklers, tripod stand sprinklers, and spraying down the area as the chipping operation occurs. You know, currently, the applicant's been chipping once every month to three weeks. It's a very infrequent operation. He's been trying to be a good neighbor and work with the town as, you know, the issues are ongoing with, with compliance. As Attorney Robertson stated previous, so he's been doing his best to stockpile logs and then chip maybe for one day. You know, part of our plan to address the noise generated from the chipping operation would be to look at having possibly a designated day or two per week and having a window of time that we do the chipping activities. So that way, concerned abutters know when the chipping activities may occur. They may not occur, but they know when they would occur if they were going to happen. As I stated, you know, the, the logs are chipped as they come in and, you know, the stockpile builds up. It's not an ongoing operation that runs every day for, for hours a day. This is something that happens sporadically. You know, so we are looking at minimizing the amount of chipping onsite, but still would need to be able to have that chipping operation because that is a large part of Mr. Gutierrez's business model with regards to how the logs are processed at the facility. I think that essentially covers all the topics we wanted to hit on. I don't know, I'll check with Paul. Paul, is there anything you want to add?
No, I, I think that, that covers it, Nick. You, you covered, you know, one of the issues precisely that, you know, he purchased this to continue his chipping operations. And, you know, he brings logs in and he sends them out as, as chipped wood. You know, that, you know, being able to do that is essential to his operations. I've seen statements on the record that he's, you know, engaging in chipping on a daily basis, which he most certainly is not. He, of course, has a chipper, one of these sort of typical chipper's that you hear on, on sites, which is, you know, these very loud chipper's that, that scream when they chip wood. And when he purchased the property, he also spent an additional $1.2 million on purchasing a high-end chipper that operates at a much slower speed. So it could decrease the amount of noise that goes on. And what he does is he, you know, stores those logs and then chips them on an infrequent basis in order to do is, you know, get rid of them as much as possible. When the logs stack up, he can usually clear them in a, in a morning of, of work. But as you said, he's willing to continue to operate that, you know, with reasonable restrictions that are not enable him to continue to use the site, Nick.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just go ahead and open this up to the board for questions, comments based on this presentation this evening. Go ahead, Rich, see you first.
Quick question. I have a few questions, but just a quick question, just to, as long as we're talking about the chipping operation and the noise, what is the noise level? And I'm, and I'm speaking specifically to the bylaw requirement on environmental protection standards, specifically 664. That speaks to a specific level of noise coming out of business district at any lot line. I don't know if we know that. If we, if we don't know it, that's fine, we can, we can move on. I just thought if we knew it, let's get it on the table.
We have not done a sound study or have taken measurements during the chipping operations. At the site meeting we had with town officials this past Wednesday, Mr. Jim Griffey, the health agent was onsite. And he said that he did take some background readings at some of the surrounding abutting properties. And we did offer to Mr. Griffey that we could set up a time where he could bring the sound, the calibrated sound instrument back to the property and we could run the chipper for additional sound measurements. But we don't have any specific decibel readings currently for that chipper.
Okay. And then I know you took down the, the drawing, Nick. If you wouldn't mind, if you could just, do you have it? Were you sharing this?
I can put it back up. I apologize for the technical difficulties earlier. I don't know what happened there.
No, that's okay. The, I'm just curious, the parking area, which is the truck parking. The, I see, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not install landscape boulders. So are those boulders? Is that a fence? What's on the back? What's the, on the backside of that parking?
Sure. So as you're well aware, the, the 50-foot landscape requirement where there's no activity to be had within 50 feet of the right of way of Route 111. We are specifying some, some boulders be placed just off that 50-foot setback line to prevent any intrusion into that 50-foot landscape buffer area. There is a small gap here between the 50-foot line and the boulders. And that's primarily so snow can be plowed, you know, straight into that area. You know, right in front of the boulders within that first few feet. But, you know, that's to prevent any intrusion into the 50-foot area. So this area had, was historically cleared. There was a, a cut and cleared and graded driveway installed and utilized by the previous landowner. He, at one point, was seeking a secondary curb cut from Mass DOT in this area. So there was some gravel, you know, the vegetation was cleared up to this point here. And there was a, a rough driveway graded in. He never went forward with that secondary access. But the area was cleared, trees were removed in this area. This was some years ago. So that area is currently, I'm not going to say void of vegetation, but it's essentially just, you know, grass growing through a gravel surface that's filled in over time. So the, the major vegetation is, exists right here at this tree line here. So these boulders are to prevent operations from creeping into that, into that area.
Okay. And then I know you talked about, so, so there's boulders, there's screening in terms of trees, no fence there. And then you talked about in your application, I read, you know, trees along Sarah's Way. What about the, the, the property to the south? So if you, if the property line to the south, so going up Sarah's Way. I know there's a wall, if you can just pull the map down a little bit, Nick. Sorry. There's a, I think you've got a wall there with, where the logs kind of stack up against that wall, I assume. Is there, what sort of screening is planned on this side of the property?
So there's a thick vegetative screen or natural vegetation that runs through this area here. And then right through here, as you enter the former, well, Mr. Larry White, who owns this residential parcel here, also previously owned this parcel here. So in the past, he expanded his operation onto this residential parcel. And this, this area was cleared on that residential lot. We're not proposing any additional screening along this existing residential property line here. You know, we're essentially proposing these concrete blocks. And that is it for the screening as this area is all compacted gravel and, you know, which used to be utilized as part of Mr. White's logging operation prior to the property being sold.
Okay, I mean, I haven't been on the site. I guess we'll talk tonight about a site visit maybe. But is it, I, I understand the compaction and maybe it's, the soils aren't suitable today. But is it, has it been determined or is it the assessment that screening isn't needed? Because there's no visibility? Or is it that it's just the, the condition of the soil?
Well, that's the current existing condition right here. Being part of the former yard. And, you know, this isn't a traditionally rectangular residential parcel. Now go to the assessor map. So you can see here, the way that this residential parcel receives frontage along Sarah's Way, it has this 50-foot strip here and then comes up, over, down, around, and the residential dwelling is here. You know, so.
It's a pork chop.
Yeah, I'd say it's a little bit more than a pork chop. But yeah, it's essentially a pork chop style lot. You know, the, the lots that are along Sarah's Way, these residential lots in a commercial district were configured in an odd fashion. I don't know the history behind the subdivision, but that's what they are. And that's what we are dealing with today. So to answer your question, we're not proposing any screening along the area, which that property owner has, you know, cleared and added compacted gravel and utilized that section of land for whatever purpose they're using it for today.
All right, I guess we'll have a chance to see it and talk about that. And then my final question for now is Sarah's Way. Is that a, and maybe this is an Alec question. That's a, is that a private way or is it a, it's a private way, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. And, and so in terms of access on Sarah's Way, we, we're not talking about that, that at all. It's an existing way. It's, there's existing access to, to this property from that. I, I mean, is, Alec, is there anything that we're, that we're supposed to be talking about in terms of this site plan or, or no, that's a, that's a given? Access is there? Move on.
No, access is already established. As you'll note in, in the application, one of the three parcels does collect its frontage along Sarah's Way, but Sarah's Way is an existing private way. The Board of Health, you just recently released the bond on that as a final paving had been completed, I believe in October, November of last year.
Okay.
I'll set, Rich.
Yep.
Okay. Before we continue with comments from the board, I, I should have started with our attorney Costa, who is on the phone and to see if there's any comments there and then move on to Sue from places. I kind of jumped the gun a little bit on that. So Adam, I don't know if you have any initial comments for the board on this or if you're more observing this evening, but I did want to give you an opportunity to speak.
No, I, I appreciate that, Rebecca, Madam Chair. So no, I don't have anything at this stage in the process. Certainly I'm available if you have procedural questions. I know you're quite familiar with the procedure for these site plan reviews and stormwater permits. Also happy to discuss any, any more specific substantive questions you have relating to the application. But I don't have anything to add at this early stage in the process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us. Sue, did you want to weigh in on any of this at this point?
Most of the items that are listed in my letter are pretty self-explanatory and need board input. The things I just want to flag out that came to light in our site walk. The police department, fire department, Board of Health, town manager and one of the abutters was there was that I raised the question about requirements on the height of the mulch pile because I know they're prone to heat, internal heat building up and fire. The fire department indicated that they're going to be doing more research. There is fire code requirements for setbacks from and access around all of the piles there. Right now, we have the large chip pile. We saw trucks coming in and dropping off more chips. We were there on the site walk, the mulch or, I guess they were stump grindings along the abutting property. My understanding from the earlier presentation, those are being removed. That was a concern by the fire department. And we also have a stump pile down on the lower level where the detention basin's proposed. And another pile that I believe looked like it might have been bark mulch, rough bark mulch as it came off the logs. Those would all be subject to the setbacks, whatever the fire department comes up with. We also noted storage trailers onsite. Some of them were to be loaded up with woodchips to be hauled off. Others were there. I asked that they provide an area to address them if they're going to stay. And towards the end of our site walk, it was determined that there was actually fuel in one of the storage trailers that the fire department indicated that it needed to be removed and it was not, it was a violation of code. So that'll be addressed. I also asked that in the paved area where the trucks would be stored, that all vehicles be stored there overnight. And there be a designated refueling area so that we could be assured that when the equipment needs refueling, there shouldn't be a fuel tank onsite. There's not a permit for it. So at this point, we have to assume they'll be bringing in a fueling service, that they be fueled on that pad so that if any fuel spills, it would be captured and they, we could have the gate to contain it before it got into infiltration areas. The other concern we had, which should be alleviated with the cleanup, was the use of boulders to keep vehicles from the tree chipping operation going on to the property of Larry White. The fire department may need some breaks in those so that they could get access through them in the event that anything material stored on Larry's property has an emergency, they can get to it. Otherwise, I think most of my comments were pretty self-explanatory. I spoke briefly with Nick about drainage and we need to coordinate on that. And he'll be getting me revised information so we can address that. But I, I think it's, it would be really good for the board members to see the site. I think that was very helpful for me and for Alec and Ian. I, I'm sure they felt the same, that seeing it helps put everything in perspective. And that gives a rough overview of my comments. And I, and I anticipate there'll be some changes based on whatever the fire department comes back with for feedback.
Thank you so much, Sue. Okay, again, opening it up to board comments. Cindy, Chris, Chris, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
All right, yeah, I probably just have a couple shorter ones. So with that proposed like stack of blocks to be a wall on the, the south end, I, I can't quite tell. I, I can't quite tell from the plan. How far setback from, from the lot line is that?
The lot line is, runs in this fashion here. So up through here, we're very close to the property line. But kind of echoing on Sue's comments and our discussions with the fire department. We are going to be modifying this log storage schematic. Fire departments, they need access around the entire pile of logs. And you know, what I show here, that's a 40-foot wide. We'll call it log storage area. So 40 feet deep. You know, in reality, that's much deeper than it needs to be. So I'll re-scale that appropriately. All the log sections they get are, they're all cut to 20-foot lengths because they, you know, they can't, they can't haul 40-foot logs. So the logs that come into the site, they're all rough cut. 18, 19, 20, 22 feet. So what I'm planning on doing is modifying this to be 25-foot wide for a log storage pile where the logs are stored lengthwise this way. And then we'll have a 20-foot, I'm going to coordinate with the fire department, but I'm planning for at least a 20-foot aisle that runs along the back here. So we'll shift this up. And then, you know, there's still enough room here for the wood chipping operation, but I feel as if that should address a majority of those fire code items, which I will be coordinating with the fire department on. So prior to submitting a revised plan, I'm going to have a sit down with them with a concept plan on log storage, access around the storage piles, access around the chip storage pile or stockpile to make sure that they're happy with everything. And if that works with them, then we'll, you know, finalize that plan and submit it to the planning board as a revised plan.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps because the, so I guess also with whatever kind of wall is there, the approximate size of that, like how, how big would that wall be? Especially compared to the stack of blocks. So I don't know how high you can safely do it.
What, what wall are you speaking of?
So the concrete blocks are along the southern edge.
Oh, so those are just two foot wide by four foot long by, you know, three foot high, just blocks. Essentially to create a barrier between the properties. So there's no migration of equipment or, you know, we don't want to be going on. You know, this, we don't want our commercial activity to extend on a residential parcel, right? After work, we've gone through the permitting process, we've made all these site improvements. We want to make sure that all the work is occurring on the designated parcel owned by the applicant. And that it's for what it's permitted for, that all the work stays in that area. So, so right here, we don't own this section of land. You know, as the properties changed hands, you know, there was, you know, just a, you know, Mr. White was still, has some equipment through here, almost a gentleman's agreement where he would come and, you know, grab a piece of equipment and be working to move things around as you know, the property changed hands, but you know, moving forward with a formal site plan and permits. You know, there needs to be a designation between the two properties. The two uses, you know, this being residential and this, you know, this is industrial and this is business here for the proposed configuration that we have here.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't picturing jersey barriers. I was thinking it was, it was like a way to be like a visual and potential sound barrier between the yard. Is that something that's done or that could be done if noise is concerned?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with the board of health agent. You know, and there were concerns raised. We'd had a residential butter to the south here, attend our site meeting this past Wednesday. And we did discuss some of those items, but in general, you know, a sound barrier is going to, you know, 10-foot high wall or 20-foot high wall, even if you get something of that nature. It's going to provide little to no benefit, given the grade of the residential dwelling is much higher than this level here. So as you go down, ups, I'll say as you go up Sarah's Way, but we're traveling to the south, the grade climbs significantly as you get to the residential dwelling that's located in this area here.
Yeah. Okay. Is the lot mostly level?
This lot?
Yes.
It's relatively level. You can see here, these, these are two-foot contours. So, you know, this couple hundred foot length, you know, there's a four to six foot drop right through this area here. Maybe a six-foot drop. So it's, it's relatively level, but not bored flat.
And what's the drop onto the basin that's proposed in the southwest there?
That grade through here down into the basin. But that's why we're collecting all our stormwater managed, or stormwater at the top. And then getting it into this catch basin here and then through a series of manholes and piping, we drop that flow into the basin to prevent erosion. So we're not just coming at a straight shot. We have a pipe that comes out of that catch basin, a few feet down, then we hit a manhole. That manhole has about a four to five foot drop in it. Then we come into a second manhole. That's got another five foot drop in it. And then the water then travels into the four bay. So it's more costly. There's a lot more structures, but we can't have water going directly into the four bay. It would just erode the, the four bay and the stormwater basin. So we have to dissipate that velocity.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry, my, my internet lagged. What was the, the rough height differential there? Was that 10, 15 feet?
Uh, it's about 18 feet.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm not familiar with asphalt tailings. Is that generally considered permeable surface or not?
Um, I mean, it's
Compared to gravel?
Relative to gravel and the way you, the town stormwater bylaw reads gravel's impervious. So the way it's modeled is, this is all modeled as, it's as if it were paved, right? For the stormwater calculation. So the basin sizing is modeled as if this were pavement because that's what the bylaw requires. So, yeah, the asphalt tailings, it's, it's the ground up asphalt as it's removed from older roadways. And then it's, so that aggregate is then utilized and spread through, through the lot.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Yeah, that, that has, covers what I had for now.
Thanks, Chris. Cindy, comments?
Yeah, a few. Thanks Rebecca. I'm just picking up on that impervious discussion. I was just looking through your stormwater numbers and I make sure, I want to make sure I understand how much existing you're considering impervious and how much additional impervious you're adding. So maybe you could walk through those again?
For current ground cover?
For the entire lot. Yeah. How much is, is you're showing? Well, yeah, walk me through how much is currently impervious and how much will be impervious when the work is complete?
Impervious as gravel cover or impervious as pavement?
Well, you've got identified in your stormwater report is existing impervious, including buildings and pavement. And then proposed impervious. You're showing a differential of 0.32 acres, but I'd like you to just sort of outline what are you calling impervious today and what will, will be considered impervious in the future?
So everything, the, the gravel surface, which currently exists today. So let me kind of take this a step back. So the existing stormwater analysis was based on, for ground cover. We utilized aerial photos, record aerial photos, mass GIS photos from 2023. And that's because of something Attorney Robertson alluded to earlier where there was some clearing of vegetation. Not an acre, but there was some additional vegetation through this area here. Now in doing our analysis, we went back to that pre-disturbed state from 2023 to ensure that our analysis didn't just capture the additional gravel that was placed as part of the activities that occurred after the applicant purchased the property. So I just wanted to put that out there first, but let me pull up, I can pull up our stormwater report with the subcatchment maps. Is that what you're alluding to? Are you looking for me to give you specific numbers? If that's the case, I don't have the, the numbers just right off the top of my head here.
Yeah, I'm looking, I think it's page two of your stormwater management application. You've got existing impervious area, area of 2.89 acres and proposed 0.52. Is that? With the total, I guess you got total estimated area to be disturbed is three acres, but obviously the existing plus proposed, that doesn't add up. Just trying to max these numbers up.
Okay, so currently today, this area down here, this, everything inside this tree line. This is our existing conditions plan is gravel cover.
Nick, do you want to put that up again? It's, you're showing rather than, are you referencing the site plan? You might want to put that up on the screen for people to see.
Oh, I'm not sharing?
Nope.
Okay.
I, I weren't seeing.
Yeah, we were seeing it.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, you have it.
My apologies.
Okay, so everything outside of this tree line, so here, this area here, this area, all this area here is all existing ground cover. And in the table that you were describing as part of the stormwater application, this was all considered to be impervious area.
And that's the gravel yard area that you've defined plus the buildings?
Correct, yes. Oh, sorry. In, in the proposed, that number is reduced because this whole area here, it's going to be a stormwater basin, but it's no longer going to be gravel cover. So that's being eliminated. We're removing this section of gravel, this driveway here onto the property. And we're removing this driveway here. So there's a net reduction in impervious coverage.
Although your, your stormwater report actually shows an increase, I believe, in impervious coverage of 0.52. So there's an increase in impervious somewhere. So it might be useful to have a graphic that sort of shades all this out. If that's something you might consider being able to provide to the board. You know, shaded graphic showing the breakdown, the way you've provided in the stormwater application?
Sure, we can do that.
Because it's a little hard to see it on the screen and, you know, your boundaries are a little bit faint. So if that's something, it might just be useful. But I, I just wanted to understand the, the total amount of impervious. It looks like it's increasing by 0.52 acres, if I understand correctly. Is that correct?
I do not believe so.
No, okay. Existing 2.89, proposed 0.52. So you're reducing it by 1.3 acres? Is that what you're demonstrating here? That doesn't seem right either.
Cindy, maybe we can allow Nick the opportunity to go back and just kind of pull together a document for us so he doesn't have to do it on the fly.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's, that's one area I'm interested in. Thanks. Okay. Let's see, I think you discussed a little bit about the well and the septic. Could you explain again, are you proposing no permanent sanitary facilities on the site? Can you just walk us through how that's going to be handled?
Sure. I apologize if we didn't get into employees and who's going to be utilizing the site. So we're not proposing a new septic system. There will be a portable sanitary toilet. There's already one on site. There'll be one that remains on site and properly maintained and serviced by licensed hauler. But in general, this isn't a manned facility. New England Tree Masters has their headquarters at 871 Mass Ave. That's where their office is. That's where their employees report 2:00 in the morning. This facility is utilized by employees who may be dropping off, they may be going to the property to drop off a load of logs, drop off a load of chips from a job that was done locally. A few times a month, two to three employees will be on site to operate the chipper. You have somebody operating the chipper. You have somebody on site in a loader, moving chips around, and then you have somebody feeding the chipper. So on average, this site will have three people. Maybe once a week who are there for the, possibly a handful of hours. Other than that, it's strictly a storage yard. Primarily for logs, some equipment and you know, the chipping operation which occurs as we detailed quite infrequently.
So if I can just follow up on that and the board of health is comfortable with just the portable toilet at the site, is it? Or is that discussion ongoing?
Well, we had the health agent on site on Wednesday and we did bring this to their attention. You know, I notified Mr. Griffey that there was a existing cesspool. We're going to have addressed per current codes to officially abandon. We have the existing well, which we're going to be requesting to be converted to an irrigation well. And there was no questions or concerns raised about having to install a new septic system.
Sue, did you have a comment to make about that?
Yeah, I asked Jim about that because it's not uncommon for a board of health to say a porta potty for a limited time. He felt that this was such a, Jim Gariffy expressed to me that this was such a low usage. He was okay with a porta potty for an ongoing use on the site and didn't feel that the low level of use warranted a new septic system. So he was okay with it. And I believe he's commented to that in his board of health comments back to the board.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say I'd like to see that in writing if he hasn't already provided it. And Sue, while we have you and maybe your letter already addressed this, but could you speak to the, the slope on the western side there? Are you comfortable with the proposed stabilization of that slope? I know it's a pretty steep drop off. And I, I think some of the original vegetation was removed from that area. So I just would like to know. And perhaps you did comment and write written for me. Can you speak to that?
I don't believe I, I did comment on it, but I am comfortable with it. It's going to be a riprap slope. Right now, the stump grindings I have are relatively stable, but obviously as they rot over time, the stability could break up, which is why they're proposing the ripraps. So I'm okay with a riprap. My main concern was getting around the slope so that they could get to the bottom, which they provided. And that the riprap does not go all the way up to the property line. So you could get down to walk around the toe of the slope and they did provide that in this final design.
Okay. And Sue, are you also comfortable, I think there was mentioned that there's, both infiltration basins have sort of a spillway. That, that water will all still be contained on site if they base. that, that, that water will all still be contained onsite if the basin over, overflows?
I had some, some questions about the basins and the drainage, and Nick is getting back to me on that. I did not go through them in great detail. I was asking testing in soils and things like that. They do have testing, but I, I had some questions about the soil characterizations. So I need to look at those in greater detail. These basins do have a subdrain, which is good because it allows them to drain it manually if they need to get in there for maintenance. So that's a good thing. We're not waiting for a drought to get in there for them to maintain it. But I have notes that I need to double check the calc's for the overflows and how often it overflows.
Okay, so just so, just so I understand, they cannot overflow offsite, is that correct? So at both locations, they still have to drain? You know, in other words, they can't impact their abutting property, can they, with overflow?
So what they'll do is they'll be balancing pre and post development runoff towards the abutting properties. So, um, both basins actually have a discharge pipe to them, which will match the predevelopment in the calc show that. And then there'll be an emergency overflow in the event that we get the, you know, the five inches of rain in six hours like Lemonster encountered, so that we know how the water, if we have an emergency situation, that the water will be controlled when it overflows. And those are, I'm waiting for additional information from Nick on that before I get into uh, details on those.
Okay, because we just want to make sure we're not adversely impacting the abutting property or Route 111.
I totally agree, and I've asked him to break down the flows on 111 in a little bit better detail because um, some of the flow goes to that catch basin at the intersection of Sarah's Way and 111. So I've asked him to look at that as a separate sub catchment to make sure we don't even have an increase of flow to there. So he's going to give me a little bit more breakdown and we'll look at it.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Cindy, I, I was able to pull up that sheet from the stormwater management application. Is this what you're referring to with in your, your question?
Uh, you're not showing it, Nick, if you're, if you meant to.
I'm not sure.
You're still on your site plan?
Is that?
Uh, yes, that's the one.
So yeah, if, if, if you might, I'll just kind of go through it real quick. I'm sorry, I was flicking through papers, just trying to, to find it. So what I did hear was, given that the bylaw calls gravel impervious, I still wanted to note what's, you know, classified as, you know, DEP impervious, right? Pavement, buildings, concrete, and what's gravel yard area. So here on the existing, we have 2.7 acres of gravel yard area, 0.2 acres of buildings, and that concrete pad that I noted earlier. So it's the two buildings and the concrete pad. That's the existing quote unquote impervious, and the remainder is wooded or vegetated. And then on the proposed, what I'm noting is there's going to be 2.04 acres of gravel, which is the recycled asphalt yard area. And then there's 0.52 acres of impervious, which is an increase because we are paving that area where we're going to have, where we'll be parking the trucks, and we're paving the the driveway apron here. So that's additional impervious area. And then the wooded and vegetated number, that also increases as we are removing the gravel from here, and that's going to be, you know, the basin's going to be grass, the side slopes are going to be grass, et cetera. So that's how those numbers are broken down. So there's a net decrease in gravel, or what we're going from gravel to recycled asphalt tailings. There's a net increase in impervious, which is, which I'm calling pavement, buildings, concrete. And then there's a net increase in vegetation of 0.36 acres. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, I'm just doing the math here. So the, the second gravel yard area is really your recycled asphalt area, the, the, the second column there, um, which you're overall reducing from 2.72 to 2.04. But I'm still not quite seeing how you're getting an increase of 0.05, but that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll look at the numbers in, in my own time. Thanks.
Cindy, if I could, I think the clarity there, we're, we're proposing to put in that paved parking area, and I think that's what accounts for the additional paved part of it. It's going, we now have the pad which, which, on which the building sits, and, and the proposal is now to have an additional paved parking area. So that increases the amount of pavement from the two tenths of an acre to a half an acre.
Right, you're calling impervious the paved and building area, but you're also calling the gravel yard area, recycled asphalt is also considered impervious, is my understanding.
Yeah, gravel or recycled asphalt, whatever you want to call it, in the bylaw, it's considered impervious. But I just wanted to, I wanted to show
Right.
how the site's being modified with, with the additional description. So maybe it's too much detail there. I apologize.
I like that, but in itself, but I haven't broken out that way. I appreciate you walking me through that. The only other comments, I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more about the, the work on the barn. Is that part of this project? And maybe you can just quickly again re-explain what you're proposing to do as part of this application on the barn?
The barn is simply a rehab. Uh, this section of the barn here may need to come down, and I'm sure when we have our site visit, you'll, you'll 100% agree. So what this section of the barn is, this is a, um, it's an open air first story. And the second floor is where I believe there was like a sawmill or something. And when that equipment was sold, part of the wall came, was, was removed. So this section is in relatively poor shape. So if it's able to be restored or rehabbed, that'll be done. If not, that section will be removed and underneath it is concrete. So that's why I'm showing it as, as this is right here. So for the purposes of this plan, we're assuming that this bump out of the building will be removed. And then that the remaining structure will remain as is with solely exterior improvements. So there's some rotted panels that will need to be replaced, probably some roofwork. But we're going to try and keep the existing character of the barn.
Man, I'm sorry, all that speckled area, the barn and next to it is concrete pad, is that?
So this is what we're calling the existing concrete pad right here. And then this is part of the barn where the barn is, um, this is the second story of the barn, and underneath it is concrete pad. So what's likely going to occur is this second story with the drive under section is going to be removed because it's in very poor shape. We'll take some pictures and, um, include, you know, provide them to the board. But I'm sure if you're able to attend the site walk, you'll be able to see what we're talking about here.
Great. Okay. And then my only comment, other comment right now is sort of reiterate what Rich asked about the noise measurements. You know, there are obviously within our noise by law and also state requirements for an increase at the property line. So I guess I would support if you can get certified noise measurements at the property line. That would be very helpful when the chipper is running. That would be good data for us.
Okay, yeah, well, we're working on that with, with the Board of Health.
Great. I think that's all I have for now. Rebecca, thanks.
Yeah, of course. Thanks, Cindy. Um, okay, I have some comments too. Um, let me just look at my notes. So I guess this is for you, Sue. Um, the driveway as it's currently proposed, um, and the way that it comes on to Sarah's Sarah's Way, um, I know that they will not be taking right-hand turns out of that driveway, but is there any concern with that not coming in at more of a 90?
Sorry about that. Um, no, I'm not concerned because that's the, it forces the trucks to follow that pattern and not take a right-hand turn. I did recommend that a stop sign be added just to make it clear that they don't have the right of way. So if someone's coming down Sarah's Way, it just makes it a little cleaner.
Thank you. Nick, I just wanted to ask that you adjust the limit of work line just to, because you're, you're talking about removals of driveways and such in certain areas. There's two driveway access points, so the limit of work likely needs to get pushed out to accommodate that. The wall, Chris asked about it. Can you put top and bottoms on, on the wall for that in your grading plan?
On the riprap slope?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm talking more to the concrete blocks because that was a question I had too. Are those getting stacked up over there or not? So
That's just one level of blocks about three feet high.
So either put a top and bottom or identify that it's one layer of block.
Okay, will do.
Top and bottom is, is our standard, right? So that's probably makes most sense. Uh, again, I'm going to say the same comments about mitigation for the neighboring parcels, um, sound, dust, dust, and visual mitigation. Um, it seems that, um, from what I understand with the fire department's comments to you, uh, that, that, that log storing area can be adjusted to allow that 20-foot strip. And if it can be adjusted for 20 feet, um, it probably can be adjusted for some evergreen screening along there and/or some sound attenuation, um, fencing. So I, I think that the board would likely be very interested in seeing some kind of screening in there uh, because I think it's largely deciduous growth. And, and of course, we'll look at this again when we're onsite together, but, um, as I recall, it's largely deciduous growth in between that, um, closest neighbor, um, and the site. Uh, so that doesn't have much screening during the winter time, obviously. Let's see. Um, I wanted to ask about the, um, the over, the, the grading that's noted taking place on that easement area? Yeah, that little, yeah. Um, so how, how does that work with that not being part of this parcel?
We just, uh, request a temporary grading easement. And that's because, you know, from the, the work and how everything kind of melded between these two lots prior to this, in order to grade this out, you'll see it's very steep through here and make this a more natural transition. We need to extend the grading out here. So, um, that's all, it's just a temporary easement for that grading work. So ground cover will be as it is currently. We're not proposing any changes solely grade and put it back to how it currently is.
Okay, so again, I, I'm asking for the limit of work to be adjusted to reflect what's actually being proposed in this plan because there's, it stops shy of like the detention basin, it stops shy of that grading, it stops shy of the riprap area to the, to the west, and there's significant amount of work that's happening outside of that line.
This, this dotted line here?
Yeah.
That's the, that's what we're, that's our recycled asphalt.
Ah, okay. So I'm not seeing the limit of work then. I'm, I'm sorry, the bold dash line to me always stands for a limit of work, but I've seen if there's a key for something, is it keyed somehow?
Yeah, we have a line that it's dashed with X's that kind of comes around through here. But, uh, on the revised plan, I'll make it more prominent.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We'll clarify that. But yeah, that, that dash line is what's going to be the recycled asphalt surface.
Okay, and maybe put a legend to it or something. So it's just there. Thank you. Are you having a safety railing at the top of the riprap?
Uh, I don't believe we do. Let me see here. No, we do not have one. Um, we do have the swale that, which provides a buffer prior to the steep drop off of the, of the slope here. So the swale is anywhere from, you know, 10 to, you know, 18 feet wide as you get down towards this area here. Maybe a good idea to add some, some guard rail where it's a little bit more narrow up here. So, you know, if a vehicle was traveling over here, it would essentially fall into the swale, into the riprap swale, which is a few feet deep before crashing over the edge. But, um, yeah, I, I do, I do see an opportunity to add a little bit of fall protection. Specifically in this area, this, where the swale isn't as wide.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea for, thank you. So, um, noting that there's no, um, like Cindy had mentioned, that a significant amount of, of plant material got removed from where that riprap area is now. I'd be very interested in trying to, and I know riprap, you're not going to be able to plant on it. But somehow add plant material to this area. So whether it's down at the bottom of the wall, because riprap's not the most attractive looking replacement for a naturally vegetated area. So if there's a way to just add some, some screening vegetation along the bottom of that wall, that might help a little bit, um, soften things up. Um, and then my last comment, uh, you mentioned using the, um, the tailings for the surface. Um, I'm going to express my concern with that because, um, tailings, uh, you know, they put out particulates and, and VOCs into the air. So that's not a good thing for people to be breathing in. Um, and they also have a potential for leaching a lot of, um, like PFAS and stuff into groundwater. So, um, that's not my favorite material to be putting on, um, surrounded by, you know, in, when this site is, you know, got a significant amount of of wetlands around you and, um, and we definitely have residential uses, um, to be thinking about with, uh, air pollution. So, um, I'm just, I'm tossing that out there as well, uh, especially if it's not giving us impermeable or pervious situations out there, right? I'd, I'd love to reduce that where we could. That's all I have for comments right now. Um, any other board comments? For them at this point? Okay, I'm seeing none. Um, I would like to open it up for public, uh, comment at this point. So if you have any comments as a member of the community, uh, please raise your hand. Hi, Rachel, I'm seeing you. Uh, go ahead. Can we unmute Rachel Dorfman? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so my name is Rachel Dorfman. My partner Sean Breen and I are the owners of 71 Sarah's Way, the closest residential abutters to the applicant's property. And we welcome this opportunity to share our experience over the past two years and to address the site plan application. From the time we purchased our home in early 2020 until the fall of 2023, the property next door remained dormant and overgrown with no signs of any active business. Since the change in ownership that occurred in 23, we have observed dramatic changes in the use of the property. The size, scale, and current use of the property as a tree processing operation has resulted in large and sustained negative impacts. These negative impacts are across a variety of issues, including unreasonable hours of operation, hazardous road conditions, noise pollution, and air pollution. We have observed a high volume and intensity of truck traffic, trucks idling, and backup alarms. This activity has occurred as early as 5:30 a.m. and as late as 7:30 p.m. There is frequent activity on the weekends, both Saturdays and Sundays, and occasionally on holidays as well, as an example. This spring, there was activity onsite on Memorial Day. This level of activity has led to an accumulation of debris on Sarah's Way, as well as a degradation of the shoulder area at the entrance of Mass Ave, leading to hazardous walking and driving conditions. Additionally, the stormwater runoff into the bottom of Sarah's Way created an extreme hazard last winter. Water running down from the slope of the property pulled down onto the road and froze. Water running down from the slope of the property pulled down onto the road and froze, turning the bottom of Sarah's Way into an ice rink as you approached Mass Ave. Perhaps more troublesome than the unregulated hours of operation, vehicle traffic, and hazardous road conditions are the impacts from the tree processing operations. During the periods that they are actively processing logs, the noise stemming from the grinder is unbearably loud on our property. It is not possible for us to have a conversation in our yard without shouting above the noise to be heard. We can hear the machine inside our house in every room with all the doors and windows closed. The tree grinding takes place on the portion of their property closest to our home. In addition to the noise pollution, we have also experienced air pollution, both in the form of dust clouds created from vehicle operations and sawdust from the tree processing and storage. We have regularly observed sawdust accumulations, both on our cars and on our back deck and grill. It is not unusual to have sawdust particulate flying through the air on our property as if it were snowing, which is an obvious health concern. We have reviewed the application being discussed tonight and would like to briefly share some concerns and feedback on additional items for the board to consider. And just as a note, our lived experience does not align with some of the characterizations made in the application. Regarding the issues of road degradation, debris, and stormwater runoff, these do appear to be remediated in the proposed site plan and stormwater management plan. However, we would ask the board to consider how these issues can be addressed in the interim between today and the time that the proposed site modifications would be completed, should the application be approved. Regarding noise pollution, this has already been discussed tonight. There are no mitigations in the proposed site plan for any type of noise buffering in the direction of our property. Additionally, the proposed site plan shows that the general area where tree processing will occur is in the same place that it has been for the past two years, which again is in close proximity to our property line. We would ask the board to require substantial noise mitigation, particularly in the direction of our property, and we realize that this will present a challenge, given the large difference in elevation between our two properties. In terms of noise volume, based on our own decibel readings, we believe the noise generated by the grinder is far in excess of both town bylaws and state regulations, and we would ask the board to investigate and quantify those noise levels. Regarding air pollution, the proposed site plan shows no mitigation tactics to ensure sawdust particulate will be contained on the property of the operation. I did hear Nick mention today that there is a plan for irrigation from the well um to use light showers when they are grinding, but there would still be an issue when the piles are open storage and extremely high. So we would ask the board to address this health concern. Regarding hours of operation, the proposed site plan speaks to using the grinder designated hours on weekdays only, and we would ask for frequency and specificity in qualifying those designated hours. We would request that the grinder be used only two pre-identified days per month and only five hours per usage day. Additionally, we would ask the board to to both create and enforce reasonable hours of operation for all onsite activities, including truck traffic. We would request 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. weekdays and 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. on Saturdays only as needed. We, of course, realize that we live adjacent to a property that is zoned for business use. We simply ask that the board establishes and thoroughly enforces reasonable and lawful limits on current and future operations at the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um. Alec, I think uh we likely need to continue this to a date.
Yes, Madam Chairperson. So looking ahead, um you have uh canceled your regularly scheduled meeting of November 3rd. So your next regular scheduled meeting would be November 17th. I will note that that would require a written extension agreement between ourselves and the applicant. Um, additionally, the board has expressed um a desire and the applicant has expressed a willingness to host a site visit similar to what was hosted as a pre-development meeting for town officials. Um, I would recommend that we schedule both here tonight um as both, given a quorum of the board, will be considered public meetings and quantify an extension of the public hearing. So we will first do an extension to the site visit and then we will uh assign the date presumably uh November 17th that we'll reconvene for uh a more formal public hearing to continue discussing. And I presume at that time, Nick would present uh revisions to the plan and documents. So if the board could, um can you open up your calendars? Um, and I would recommend we first target uh the week of November 3rd. I do have a note here that we were expecting a reduced quorum on that week, so uh please do uh look for a date that everyone is available. I know right off the bat, Monday was unavailable as we were going to have a reduced quorum. Um, so why don't we begin looking at Tuesday, November 4th? Uh, and of course, any board member, pipe up, let us know if you are not available. And same to the applicant uh and to their team. Nick, most specifically, you have to make sure this lines up with the date that you're available.
Alec, did you say Tuesday, November 4th?
Uh, let's start with that. Tuesday, November 4th.
I can do Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm available.
No issue.
I'd prefer beginning of the day if or end of the day, if that's possible.
Uh, Rich, do you have availability that day?
Yeah, I I unless I'm traveling, I should, I I'm fine.
And I I can make it work. Whatever the board needs, we'll we'll make work.
Okay, Rebecca, it sounded like you had a time preference. Um, do you want to let us know what time works most flexibly for you?
Yeah, nine or 10 would be great if the board can do that or um towards the end of the day, like four o'clock, um just so that I don't divide my day up too much.
Okay, let's start with um why don't we split the differences on the first time? Uh, does the board have, or let's just start at nine. Does um just to confirm, Cindy, Chris, Rich, prospectively, nine o'clock work for you?
Yes.
Starting 10 would be better for me.
Okay. Rebecca, is that effective for you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Cindy and Rich?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Nick, uh, does 10 o'clock on uh Tuesday, November 4th work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, Sue, would you also be available to attend that meeting?
Yes, I am available.
Fantastic.
Alec, quick question. On my calendar, it says election day. Is that a it can you can you have a scheduled meeting on an election day?
That is a very valid question.
I just want to make sure. I I don't know the legality behind it. I don't even know if it's a this is a state election, a federal election. This is not like Google Calendar. It popped up election day.
That is a great a great question, as I'm sure Adam can chime in and give more detail. Um, we can host uh meetings, but not public hearings on uh election days. I don't know offhand if we actually have a ballot and election being hosted, but Adam, does that even matter if we have election services that day?
Um, so um so it doesn't if it's not a session of the public hearing. I I also don't believe that there is any election in Boxborough on that day. Um, but in the event that there was, you could not hold a session of the public hearing. But it sounds to me like you're proposing a site visit and not a public hearing. And and I guess this segues into another comment I was going to make anyway before you officially announced what it was that you were going to do on the 4th. So the way the open meeting law is now structured and has been for about a decade since they recodified it, uh, site visits no longer qualify as meetings. They they don't qualify under the definition of meeting. And so you have the ability to convene a site visit as you choose, without it being a session of the public hearing, without it even being a public meeting. You're not even obligated to post that as a public meeting 48 hours in advance. The caveat there is that there can be no deliberation onsite. If the board intends to deliberate and to really have any substantive conversation other than allowing somebody like Nick to sort of walk you through the site and provide orientation um and give information, uh if you intend to deliberate on anything of substance, then you have to be included as a session of the public hearing. Um, so just be be mindful of that. Um, typically, these are structured so that they're not meetings, they're not public hearings. There is no deliberation that provides for greater flexibility. You just have to be mindful that you're not engaging in that exchange of opinions or ideas until you reconvene uh at a session of the public hearing.
Just to cut, sorry, Alec, please. I was gonna say that has been our typical practice that um board members may uh pose questions that the applicant can take back and we document those and post those after the fact if any questions were asked at the time of the site visit.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Uh, yeah, I just want to understand um that there will be no operations going on at the site on the day of the visit. Is that correct? Or will there be?
Can the applicant speak to that?
Yeah, I would imagine that there, you know, he tends to, you know, a truck may come in from time to time. If the board wants him not to do that, it might be useful to see sort of what happens. A a truck comes in from time to time and yeah, dump dumps off chips. Um, I I don't think that there's anything scheduled or not scheduled for that day. If for some reason the board wants to see something happen or doesn't want to see something happen, we could arrange for that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess um I'd like to see a typical operational day if if there are operations going on at the site. I don't know that you would run the necessarily run the wood chipper on that day. Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I just trying to get as realistic a uh feel for operations as well as the site itself. So because it was a holiday, that triggered my my thought. I wonder if they'd be working. It sounds like you know it would be a normal workday. Um, so I don't know what else to uh to expect, but I just want to throw it out there that you know, I think the preference to see the operations and and if if operations are in fact going on site.
We can, I can get back, talk to the to the client, um Ms. Markowitz and confirm um. Certainly, we can arrange for have a truck dropped off. And I know there was discussions previously about having a demonstration of the chipper. And I can also discuss that with um with the client and get back to uh either Adam or Alec or both.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, could I ask a question of you just for clarification? Um, I'm my understanding this there's somewhat of a gray area between allowing deliberations and and question and answers. Um, is it your position that the board uh cannot ask questions to be answered, you know, without formal deliberations, but simply pose questions and and ask for directions about pointing things out? It's my understanding that they could ask, you know, basic questions about what's this and where does this go? And we could respond to those.
Through you, Rebecca?
Yes, please.
Um, so so that that's my position as well. I I'm I'm not um sort of a stickler for this, you know, there can't be any discussion whatsoever. I don't I don't read the law that way. Um, consistent with what you just described, I think that it's appropriate for board members to uh ask questions about orientation of the site, uh layout of the proposed development, if there's a question about um, you know, where the swale might be adjacent to the riprap area, if there's a question about where the 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 pad, uh the asphalt pad might be located for the parking of the the trucks or vehicles. I think those sorts of questions are appropriate. What might not be appropriate is for board members to begin to engage in a a back and forth dialogue with the applicant or the applicant's representatives uh about whether it would be better to relocate something from one area to another area or whether something could be added to to which maybe Nick responds and said, well, we could do this, but how would you like to see it? Should it be done this way or that way? Well, now you're getting now you've sort of crossed the line into deliberation, and that's something that should be reserved for the next session of the public hearing.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I was also um wondering whether we might have permission to access the um closest residential abutters property on that during that same day if that if that isn't as uh amenable to that.
Alec, do you want to reach out and um inquire about that?
Yeah, um, I will contact um uh Rachel and Sean to confirm if that would be something they would be willing to accommodate as well.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Um, okay, Alec, next steps, we are looking for a hearing date.
Yes, so your next regularly scheduled meeting uh would be November 17th. That would provide uh just under two weeks for the applicant to make revisions um post the date of the site visit. So I assume they'll be well underway between now and the site visit, but um allow them to shortly thereafter provide those back to you. Um, give Sue time to prepare an updated memorandum um if necessary. Uh additionally, I do want to check in with the fire department as we get closer for a check-in to see where we stand on some of those comments they had. Um, uh, with the applicant, uh first and foremost, with the applicant be amenable to an extension of the public hearing and an extension of the board's deadline to render a decision to that date.
The applicant would be amenable.
Okay, um, so Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion to extend the public hearing uh for Monday, November 17th. This would be first on your agenda, so 7:05 p.m.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Cindy, seconded by Chris. Um, as I see you, a vote, please. Rich Kuzardi.
Kuzardi, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
And Vernor, aye. Uh, thank you to the applicants for coming in and speaking with us today. Uh, we'll look forward to seeing you on the 17th of November.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, next public hearing, uh we are going to reopen 975 Massachusetts Ave Site Plan uh Review and Stormwater Management Permit. Uh, in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, uh the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw 2.5 Site Plan Approval and Boxborough Stormwater Bylaw. The Boxborough Planning Board will continue a public hearing to review the application submitted by Goldsmith, Prest, and Ringwall uh Incorporated on behalf of the applicant BHG 109 LLC LLC to construct an eight-unit contractor storage facility. Um, okay, um, is the applicant here to provide any information to us? Any additional information?
Yes.
Uh, hi, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um. So if it's all right, everyone, I'd like to just share my screen here.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty. For the record, Limho Tiv, I'm project engineer at GPR, worked with Preston Ringwall. Um. Following our last meeting, um, we had directions to um locate additional trees along the furniture of the uh project site and approximately 50 feet in from the front property line. Uh, we have provided an updated site plan um before you. Here is the existing conditions plan showing the trees that were located that are greater than 15 inch in diameter along the entire front of the property. So that has been provided. Um. Not a whole lot to say there. Um, we're still taking the same amount of trees down that are shown here. Um. That's really it. Um, in addition to the additional survey, we had also discussed the cost estimate for the trail fund that has to be provided. Um, let me just go to that. So I put together um a quick cost estimate, this cost estimate. Um, I've taken values from RS memes data um published in 2023. And the request was that we provide a cost estimate for a an ADA compliant sidewalk along the entirety uh the entire furniture of the property. Um, along with asphalt berm as option number one and granite curbing as option number two. Looking at the numbers down here, the asphalt berm uh with the sidewalk will cost approximately $12,860. And granite curbing, uh, we're in the range of $31,061. Um, we have also looked into the the last project, the the project next door um at 81 Mass Ave. The trail fund that was provided for that project was $7,500. Uh, please, please correct me, Alec, if uh if I got that wrong. Um. As a as comparable um trail fund that was provided as part of the approval condition. Um, looking at the furniture of the uh property next door versus the one that we have currently, the property next door is approximately 40 feet less in terms of furniture. So you know, the the price of $7,500 um approved at a date approximately six years ago. Uh, comparing it to this property, you know, $12,860,000, I'm sorry, $12,860 uh seems like a very reasonable uh fund as a comparable project. Um. That's really it. I'm happy to answer any questions about the cost estimate or survey located. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, board members, um, any comments here, questions? Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, what what do we, so we, this is basically, is this a cash payment? To our sidewalk fund, so this, I mean, obviously, there's two values that RS means was used to calculate two different approaches. As for granite, so I understand that. But is that, so this is a cash payment into that fund? Is that how this works?
Madam Chairperson, if I could respond to that?
Please go out.
How the board has handled that in the past is via a condition of the decision. It's a donation offered to the select board for the for the sidewalk fund. And that, like I said, donations made to them, the select board is the only entity that can accept the donation, but then it goes into a specific gift account.
That is specific for sidewalks, Alec, or it's not, it's not sort of earmarked that way?
I believe it's earmarked for sidewalks and trails. I've never seen the language that originally established it. But between now and your last meeting, did do a little back research. Sue, it's very helpful in helping point to specific decisions where the board did render a decision where it was related. We came across three in particular, the same fund comes up time and time again. Typically, these funds are established as a gift account with clear delineation of how they can be spent. In this case, the title being the sidewalk fund. That would typically go towards sidewalks or trail networks can sometimes be within the scope. And a gift account is established in such a way that it can be spent at the designation and sole discretion of a specific entity. Typically, that would be your Department of Public Works Director, or in some cases, it would be the select board specifically.
Okay, so it's not just building a sidewalk, it could be maintaining too.
Theoretically, I mean, I, again, I've never seen the original language. I I've seen some that are vague enough in language, but in my experience working in Boxborough, I would not anticipate you would have a sidewalk fund with such vague language. I would expect it would be for the establishment and construction of new sidewalks.
All right, and which projects have, this has been assessed, this was assessed on the neighboring project, and you said there were a couple others, Alec, you referred to?
Yes, so Sue, Sue did a deep dive that, given that she'd been with the town for longer than I, she went through several projects where she believed it may or may not be. In the last fifteen year window, we look back and we had Enclave, so seven hundred, seven fifty, or seven hundred to eight fifty, let's call it Mass Ave. Specifically through a minor modification, the board chose to to waive the construction of sidewalks for a thirty-five thousand dollar payment for sidewalks, a donation of the sidewalk fund. That being accounted for for the frontage along Stow Road from the entryway, so approximately nine hundred and twenty linear feet for thirty-five thousand square feet. In the case of eight eighty-one Mass Ave, that's approximately six hundred and fifty linear feet. But Limho can probably give you the the exact number of frontage. That was a seventy-five hundred dollar contribution. And in the case of five ninety-three Mass Ave, that appeared to be a partial contribution because sidewalks were established, but not across the full length of the frontage. That was only a two thousand dollar contribution.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Rich? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Other comments from board members?
Sure, I have some. Let me just, again, go back to my.
I'm just, while she's pulling that up, just speaking to the history of our request for sidewalk funding. It has been a little subpar estimating historically, I would say. And I I'm not feeling a hundred percent that this, the the neighboring parcel is probably the best one to compare this to, frankly.
Sir Rebecca, you're saying that you don't think that the adjacent parcel is a good comparison?
No, I don't actually. I I feel like, you know, just knowing the pricing of asphalt and granite, if we are trying to do a comparable sidewalk to what got installed down by Blanchard and Sargent, you know, you know, that that has a granite curb to it. I would say you could never buy these numbers even look low, so you could never buy granite curbing all the way down the front face of the that property and asphalt. For five hundred dollars or twelve thousand bucks, so.
Is Sue Carter still on the call?
I am.
Would you mind weighing in on that?
Yeah, based on what we found with negotiating with Mass dot for the sidewalk from the Blanchard School to Liberty Square. They will require granite curbing, even if you set the sidewalk back ten, you know, ten feet. That wasn't enough for them to waive the granite curbing. So I think you need to go granite curbing. Practically speaking, this doesn't address police details, it doesn't address mobilization, erosion control, land clearing, things like that. If they were to build it themselves. So it really comes down to the what the board feels is reasonable. Especially since you don't have a particular project that you want to apply it to right now for sidewalks. You know, you may want to go with with the thirty-one thousand that was suggested here. So that you have a starting point. It's really up to the board. I think this is low. There are other items not included in it.
Thank you, Sue. Cindy, you had more comments?
Yeah, I think my comments are really focused. I guess you know, on the compliance with all the rules and regs and zoning bylaws, I don't know if you were ready to. We got a preliminary draft decision, but I was hoping that staff would provide a staff report that really addresses compliance with all the applicable rules and regs and zoning bylaws in a much more linear way. I, but you know, I appreciate the the initial draft, but I felt like it was kind of pulled together, but not in any sort of orderly manner. So I would ask if now is the right time, but I would ask that staff prepare a a more comprehensive staff report, sort of again, going through the the rules and regs and the zoning bylaws to identify, you know, where the applicant has offered to make changes to to make compliance with those items. And then, you know, I believe our job is to identify the decision criteria and whether the project ultimately meets the the seven, seven or nine, seven decision criteria. It's section two point five point seven, so you know, I would like to ask, as I said, staff to to produce a staff report that's more comprehensive. So that we have a better understanding of how each of these items are met. I do appreciate that the applicant has been responsive to most of the comments from the from the engineer and I guess also curious where we stood on all the landscaping, but you know, a lot of time has lapsed and we've been working on various projects. So you know, it'd be really helpful to understand kind of where we are on all those items. So that's where I'm at.
Thanks Cindy. Alec, is that a possibility for you?
It is. It certainly is. I would not like to postpone this. So I will say to the board from a staff perspective, I would not like to drag this to to your November meeting. I know we do have a special meeting scheduled to to work through the Park at Beaver Burke and work through that decision. What I would like to do is that if we're gonna if we're gonna continue this out, we're not going to do the decision here live tonight. I would like to to prepare the decision for that meeting scheduled for Thursday, October thirtieth, only because we have canceled your November third meeting. I, we've just got to get this one out the door. We got to get this one rendered and done, so that way we can have a clear plate for for your upcoming application, which you you started earlier tonight.
It sounds like it might be valuable to to go ahead and do that, so I, you know, would be in support of that. We could probably go through the decision a little bit today. I mean, if the the board is okay with that, just to kind of provide some initial comments. I know I have some for what I read, but you know, I'm, is that okay with everybody?
Madam Chairperson, I will note, it has been the past practice of the board. If you feel comfortable tonight approving or disapproving with or without conditions, subject to the final form of a written decision. The the thirtieth would be within the fourteen days, so that I would be willing to to accept that motion if you were willing to make it tonight. That way we can get the statutory component out of the way and finish up the the written decision, but that's ultimately a discretion left to the board. I just interject it.
Yeah, I I just wouldn't feel comfortable with voting on this without a a decision that people were feeling comfortable with. Feel like that's a little cart before the horse, in my opinion. I don't know how the the board feels about that, but.
Is there, do we have a decision to look at tonight? I thought there was a draft.
Ian, can you pull up your draft?
Yeah. So one thing I wanted to ask about before we get into the decision is I did not see an updated planting plan or landscape plan.
That is correct. I believe we had discussed that the final landscaping plan will be provided in accordance to the markup plan that you had provided, Madam Chair, during the last meeting. That was made as part of the approval condition and we had discussed that last meeting.
We did, but here we are in front of a meeting right now where we could have reviewed that plan.
Unfortunately, our landscape architect is on vacation for quite some time, so I couldn't get him to to update it in time. I apologize, but I figured because we have the condition providing a landscaping plan in compliance with the markup plan. We recover on that on that basis, but.
Okay, shall we go through, I'm assuming board members might have comments on the decision that they've already kind of marked up? It would be helpful to go through those?
Yeah, let's go through it.
Who'd like to go first, or do you want to just roll through this? Alec, what would be the best way to go through this?
I would recommend, so let's take it section by section. I will say Ian is steering the ship here. Ian has prepared. Ian, I think this is your first decision, maybe second before the planning board, so another major milestone for Ian and his professional development. Thank you, Ian. Why don't we take it section by section? Does anyone have any comments on the forward? Usually the most benign section, but board members are encouraged to provide feedback on anything.
No, no comment on the forward. From me.
You know, I, again, I I struggle with this Dropbox format that we've got because things get buried, the exhibits get buried. I guess I'm just thinking out loud here about, you know, how we get to organize, because I'm trying to go back to documents that I think we saw, but I don't know which date they were in. So again, this is something I'd ask staff to sort of, you know, the the current projects and applications site hasn't been updated to include everything on this project. You know, we need a one repository where everything is sort of flows. You know, if places submitted a comment letter two months ago and the applicant responded, and then the response to that, those are each in in separate folders. I'm just really struggling with how to review the record in a timely way. So I guess, again, I would ask staff to you know, either update the current projects and applications page so that everything is in one repository rather than broken into the Dropbox by meeting. So that's just an ask. But let's keep going.
So I believe next would be findings. Ian, do you want to scroll down to that? Compliance with the zoning bylaw, actually.
So this section only addresses section six. This is kind of what I was getting at about staff report. There's many applicable sections of the zoning bylaw and our site plan rules and regs. And this only calls out, you know, a small portion of section six, so unless, and I don't know that we always go through every bylaw, but I think staff should be doing that, preparing that report to us. My familiarity with the with these decisions, and I went back to the eight eighty-one decision, was that, again, they provide the the decision criteria really, and and we explain why how we determine whether or not the project meets those seven criteria. So this whole format I'm just struggling with because I don't think it's this doesn't feel like the right way to draft the decision, and I guess I would recommend to go back to other decisions and see if you can come up with something that's a little more concise, but again, provide us the background, how you, you know, how you're developing those to get to where the criteria are either met or not met.
Ian, make a note, please. We're going to address section two point five point seven.
Like all of this, I would suggest it goes into a staff report, right? And again, I wouldn't identify all the applicable sections of the bylaw and applicable sections of the rules and regs for site plan approval. And that, to me, you know, that you guys can provide that to us. And then we can make that determination whether or not we meet the decision criteria of section two point five point seven. That's what I would recommend. And and actually, as part of this, I think, you know, cross referencing, and I know this may be coming too much of a project, but you know, when the applicant submits a document that sort of bolsters how you got to that these findings, that's also useful to know. So again, not not to make a major project out of it, but that's how I would like to see the the staff reports to help us come up with the decisions that are a little more concise. If that makes sense.
How did we do the decision on site plan? How did we do the decision on on Codman Hill? That was a site plan and a stormwater?
It was a site plan, stormwater, and I can't remember if they did earth removal. I think
I feel like it was.
Yeah, I think they did. This applicant, however, Limho did did withdraw the the earth removal component, so those elements are not pertinent to this decision. Only stormwater and site plan.
Okay, did we, did we do it the way Cindy's describing where it was designed around decision criteria?
Yes, so at that time, originally with that decision, we'd actually met and even discussed a couple members of the board and myself potentially thinning out our typical decision criteria. So historically, we do address every item under two point five point seven decision criteria. However, we had discussed potentially reducing that so that your decisions are not quite as lengthy. In addition, we do need to address the criteria in the stormwater bylaw as well.
Right, okay.
I guess to that point, Alec, and maybe Cindy said this too, I mean, if if this much, if this information went into the staff report and we could just reference a staff report, then this decision gets a lot smaller too, right? It's just referencing a separate document.
If the board is willing to undertake that approach, we certainly can do so. That would make our staff reports a little more robust. Usually we keep that to two to three pages, but we're willing to do the the work in advance if that does mean reducing the length of decisions. That does ultimately benefit the enforceability of a decision. The lengthier it gets, the more complex it is, the harder it is to enforce. So doing the work ahead of time in the report is the solution to that. We will certainly go that approach.
Well, the decision, sorry.
No, go, I was just going to ask if how the board felt about that.
Yeah, I think we need to address the decision criteria in the decision. Certainly findings of fact, and we can try and limit those. I guess I'm still not a hundred percent comfortable on what we're trying to show in the findings per se, but I think the staff report should bubble up to allow us to create a decision that addresses, as I said, the seven decision criteria and site plan review, and then findings of fact, we just have to sort of work through perhaps what we think is the most important. I think we need a section on waivers, which this this draft doesn't include. And yeah, I mean, as we go through it, I'll find a few more things, but I I think that would be a little more succinct for the final decision, but it does put the onus on you guys to create a staff report that's a little more robust.
Yep, and that is Yep, and that is work that we're willing to do. So we will need to address uh specifically the findings of section two point five point seven uh and the findings of the stormwater rules and regulations. Um, we should discuss the waivers tonight. Um, at our last meeting, I do believe we affirmed um that short of the uh the landscape revisions, which were going to be done as a condition, um as well as uh the contribution of the sidewalk fund, a number to be to be determined. But otherwise, the board had agreed to those list of waivers. Um, do we want to pull those up and affirm that the board is uh in favor of all of the remaining waivers in Limho's revised letter?
Yeah, and could you summarize why the waiver letter got revised? Because again, I've lost the thread on on what changed. Because we had a waiver letter prior, at least one waiver letter prior. So.
Uh, Limho, do you want to take that one?
So we revised the waiver uh request letter specifically to remove the re uh waiver request to provide locations of the trees along the frontage. Uh, because we have discussed um additional survey to locate those trees, um that waiver is no longer needed. That is the only uh thing that changed on the revision.
Sorry, which section had had you removed? What what site plan rule and reg was that?
I think the last section listed here, last waiver. The one eleven corridor.
Four point, I'm sorry, four point five point one.
Sketches and computers.
Oh, the sketches, okay. That's new or that? Sorry, I thought you took out the one that required you to identify all the trees, right? That was the one?
That was part of this, Cindy, I think, and the identifying of the um fifteen and over. And they have agreed and done the work, so that's been struck from four point five point one waiver request here.
So four point five point three was that request, is that right, Limho?
Hang on one second, let me just pull up. Alec, do you happen to, Alec or Ian, do you happen to have the the last version of the waiver request?
Yes, that's something we can pull up. Bear with me.
Oh, I got it here. My apologies, it was section four point five point three. All trees with a breast height diameter of fifteen inches or greater shall be located, tagged and displayed on the site plan.
So you've now done that, so you're no longer requesting a waiver, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Um, otherwise, um is the board uh is the board in agreement with the waivers requested uh remaining in this letter? Four point four point two, previously discussed. Four point.
Discuss the parking lot.
Four point one point six, bicycle parking.
I am.
Yep, good with that.
Yep, and four point five point one.
Yeah, I'm good with the waivers.
Good here.
So I guess um this four point five point one, I'm struggling a little bit with the amount of disturbance and what the new um building is gonna look like from the road. And I know the applicant has indicated that it would be quote unquote similar to what the adjacent property is, eight seventy, eight eighty-one. But given the amount of, as I said, the amount of disturbance, the um the wetland replication, the uh change in elevation due to blasting, um the retaining wall, you know, I I think it would be helpful to have a a view of the, from the roadway, of what this is gonna look like. Because I I am having trouble, I, you know, I keep driving by that section and I'm looking at eight eighty-one and I, it's true, you don't see much. But this one feels more impactful to me, and I guess I'm not really comfortable that um the one eleven corridor piece. Um, although, you know, maybe not a computer simulation, but some kind of a a sketch of the, how it's gonna look with all the um the new grading and the uh retaining wall, I think would go a long way to giving me some comfort on uh how this is gonna look. We've got a big cut in the driveway, seventy-two foot wide cut. And then I think you're gonna be able to see, because it's a hundred feet closer than the eight eighty-one building, and the elevation is different. So, you know, I'm I'm just struggling a little bit with waiting this request because I I don't, I'm having trouble picturing what this is gonna look like from the roadway. And I do think it will be more impactful than the eight eighty-one building.
What document is that? For section four five one, where?
Site plan rules and regulations.
Say that again, say, I'm sorry.
Site plan rules and regulations.
Yeah, so is that a, should that have been provided at the onset? My internet's stable, I'm just gonna go off camera here for a second. So, because I think what you're describing, Cindy, is valid, right? Like you, you want to see a sketch of what this looks like in terms of the Route one eleven corridor.
Well, the applicant is representing, he submitted photographs.
You want to see.
Yeah, the applicant submitted photographs of the adjacent building, I believe, um perhaps from the roadway. But my feeling is that this building is going to look, this structure and the associated retaining wall um is gonna look more impactful, as I said, than the eight eighty-one building. So I'm not convinced, without a simulation or a sketch, that I'm ready to sign off on this particular item.
Well, and I think if I read it here, right, through the sketches or computer simulation, the applicant shall document the impacts of the proposal on the visual quality. That's something, I mean, I'm just playing it out, it's beyond the waiver, it's something I think you're, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, and I'm just trying to understand, that's something that you're saying we should see as part of approval of this site plan. Prior to, right?
Yes, yes, and I know it's a little late, I think. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't know the timing on the waiver. Yeah, go ahead, Lim.
Um, so I, you know, I'm not gonna push back on the fact that, you know, the the abutting property does have more screening. Um, I I think it's a fair point to make, and we have discussed that before, which is why we tried to provide um pictures from the abutting property as well as pictures of the front of the property where we're coming in with the post driveway. Yeah, we we do have less of a distance between um, you know, the two, the two properties, um which is why we were, you know, okay with providing additional plantings to screen the retaining wall, as well as the additional planting to screen the front of the building. You know, all all these plantings that were provided um to kind of help, you know, screen that view, uh similar to the two additional trees um that were provided on each side of the driveway right at the front there. You know, these are all items that we were, you know, trying to uh commit to in in order to kind of compensate for the lack or, you know, reduced distance in comparison between the two properties. But this waiver has always been, um, you know, we've had this waiver since the very beginning. And we've kind of worked around basically um to kind of accommodate, you know, the need for that waiver.
I understand that. Um, I think we, again, have to make a finding that this is going to be compatible. We have to find that this is compatible with the surrounding area. And uh, you know, as I started to dig into it and look at the site plan and look at the amount of removal for the driveway, um the cut for the driveway, the blasting associated with the ledge, you know, I've walked the site, which I was very helpful. I find that it would be valuable to have some kind of a sketch, um, you know, others may feel differently. But um I'm not ready to make a finding that that this is integrated, whatever the uh, I have to get the exact language, but I'm not ready to make a finding yet that this is well-integrated to the natural environment. Because I'm just not there yet. And uh, again, I don't know how tall these plantings, I I, we probably have to go through the planning plan again. But new plantings are gonna look very different than um what's there today. And um, again, we need to make that finding, and I'm I'm just not there yet, so. That's kind of my issue with that waiver at this point.
Okay, so what could we do for uh to to kind of accommodate this visual aid?
You asking the applicant?
Uh, I am asking the applicant.
Um, well, I guess short of providing a computer simulation or sketch, I'm not sure what else. We'll have to, we'll have to think about that, because we did provide kind of a profile sketch of the um, you know, if you're standing on Mass Ave, kind of looking into the to the property. That was a sketch that was provided in in response to kind of the view of the view of the site.
Are you talking about the the site section view that you provided, um exhibit plan? Yeah.
Limho, uh which meeting was that submitted for, if you remember? I can pull it up right here.
I I don't, um.
I mean, it's.
It was probably, it was probably in the first.
Sorry, this is the document here. Um, it's just not very representative of what is truly gonna be going on out there. In fact, I'm not sure that the building, yeah, you don't have a a a view from Mass Ave on this one, this is a side view, I believe.
We have provided photos from from Mass Ave. One second.
It sounds like what Cindy's asking for is almost like a a Photoshop or a a modeling of of the building mass um and its proposed location as seen from Mass Ave. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy.
Yes, it would be, you know, the elevation of the building with um the proposed retaining wall. You know, perhaps some some tree height surrounding the building, so we get some, uh, I think he gave us some building height in this sketch, but yeah, I mean, I think I've represented it pretty, as best as I can, and what I'd be looking for. And I, again, I apologize for the lateness of this request, but, you know, to me, I need to make a finding. And I I'm not sure I can make a finding without this um particular piece of the information.
Yeah, I I think, I think the the skip, the site section view, that was prob- part of the site visit, the the main purpose of it was to try to understand from that trail behind the property, how that looked, and like that that, it does that well. But picturing from Mass Ave, it's kind of hard, because there's obviously a bunch of trees that already exist that would all still be there. Uh, screening, I think that might be helpful.
And the retaining wall and new plantings, so, you know, that's a a fair amount of of work. And as I said, the um the ledge is going to be blasted out. So, and the driveway cut is gonna be uh seventy-two feet at the, at Mass Ave, narrowing to twenty-four feet as you get into the driveway, I understand that. But I think we need some, I I need some visual representation of that, because as I said, I I need to make that finding, and I'm not ready to do that.
Well, I'm hearing support from other board members as well. Limho, um, is that something that your office can prepare and share with the 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 board?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts here on that. Um, and I guess it, what I'm hearing, and and correct me if I'm wrong, board members, um, something from Mass Ave looking up towards, like probably through the driveway would probably be the best, um, looking up at the building, show the wall, building, and probably the plantings at planted planted height would probably be um be good. Does that meet what you were going for, Cindy?
Yes, and Rebecca, I mean, I I would get your input on, you know, how long it's gonna take for those plants to to fill in, you know.
Well, I I I think if they do it at install, then that you can see, and obviously that'll be the worst case scenario. And and then, you know, as they establish their, the conifers are gonna put on a foot a year. Okay, so you could just kind of get your head around what that would, um, the impacts of it over in five years, I guess. If if you see like the worst case scenario. Okay. Was that, that was the last waiver, correct, Alec?
My apologies, yes, that was the last waiver.
Okay, so we have answers on those.
Yep.
Back to the decision.
Yes, I'm gonna pull that up here, I've uh pulled it up on my own screen as well. Bear with me. So I've made the note uh previous up ahead, which sections we're gonna address.
Um, okay, I have a couple of comments in here.
Absolutely, please do.
Number four. Um, it says, under this decision or the shall, I think you have to strike or the. Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah, it sounded funny, yeah. Then on number five, uh, I I asked why we didn't get that plan yet. Um, okay, um, number six. Can we state that this sidewalk will include Places Associates? Or our town engineer? Sorry, at the end of it. Prior to the clearing and pre-assessment sidewalk, including Places Associates? Or you you referenced site engineer, town engineer, yeah, that's probably right. And the purpose of it is to evaluate and assess for protection. So it says to evaluate above, but um I it it just want her assessment is to make sure that we aren't saving or we're not losing trees that we could otherwise save.
You want to have that say a little bit more about for protection of existing trees along the fringe of clearing? So it's a little more clear what the intent was?
I love it, Sue.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have anything until twenty. And most other board members do. Twenty, can we add uh rodenticides? And then my last comment is twenty-four. I just asked if we should be adding a a timeline in on this one. Decision unchanged. Oh, I guess.
This is is the Sunset Clause in there, yeah.
Yeah, yes, the Sunset Clause is.
Okay.
Rebecca, um, given the amount of steep slopes that have slope stabilization and erosion control blankets, I understand not having the chemical fertilizers, but if that growth isn't maintained dense enough and gets really sparse because of poor soil, it may not, it may have more erosion. So do you want to have something to allow fertilizers on that slope to maintain the dense vegetation and stabilize it?
I'd love to stay away from it, unless it's like a an organic something or other.
Do you want to put on steep slopes, organic-based fertilizers would be acceptable or something like that?
I'm okay with that, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Sue, for.
You know, I just don't want to see the the vegetation to get so sparse over time that it it doesn't hold anything back. And there's a long-term erosion control issue on that slope.
Sue, remind me the language, organic-based.
Fertilizer.
Fertilizers. Shall be allowed. Okay, yeah, I just, that concerns me, because sometimes if they're totally neglected, we end up with issues.
Thanks, Sue.
So, uh, before we go any further, uh, we do need to address the um contribution to the sidewalk fund. Um, so the board heard information tonight, prepared by the applicant. Um, you heard the recent decisions we found. I would like to iron that out, especially given that this gives uh Limho the opportunity. Um, I would like to iron that out, especially given that this gives uh, Limho the opportunity to go back. Um, and discuss and confirm with his client whenever we have the opportunity to prevent a challenge, I always like to.
Um, I see Ian's hand up too. Did you have something, Ian?
Yeah, it was uh, specific to that. Thank you. Um, while we were looking at the what the applicant had provided, I had dug through the eight eighty one decision. And I pulled the language from that condition, which is just one sentence that reads. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant slash owner shall provide a gift in the amount of. That was seventy five hundred to the town sidewalk fund. The applicant owner shall provide a gift.
Is that the right language, Alec? I mean, you kind of qualified it that it's a.
We'll we'll just include the the backend language of where it's going, but a gift in the amount of. And leave that blank for you.
To the town's sidewalk fund. Ah, yes, to the slight. Say.
Thanks, Ian.
So Rebecca, I had a few more comments in the body of the of the um, of the findings, I guess. And again, I don't know how.
Let's take this one off the the um, plate first. Um, how does the board feel about um, the contribution? Um, I'm inclined to not not necessarily do the police details. Those that was an interesting um, consideration, but I'm I'm uh, I am in interested in seeing the asphalt and the granite curbing. Um, cost included in this.
Isn't it one or the other?
Yeah, from a cost.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sidewalk and the and the um, the the.
Yeah, from a cost perspective, I'm good with that. I'm I'm not. It's not clear to me that we would do granite, but I think the just in terms of ensuring the cost is there. Should we? And I think then also it covers some of the detail aspects, which we're not specifically calling out. So I I think I'm okay with that cost piece.
I I think, Rich, that um DOT, mass DOT would require the the granite. That I think that's what I understood.
If it's right along the road. Yeah, if it's right along the road, right?
And that would be because it's right on one eleven. But you would prefer the larger of the two values, which accounts for granite curbing is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I'm. Still surprised by that number, but. That that's inclusive of the sidewalk and the granite curbing?
Uh, that is quoted as granite curbing, six inch wide, eighteen inch in height. Uh, subtotal cost with granite curbing. Limho, am I reading this correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
We want to make that exhibit, I'm sorry, and. If we're going to reference that, we should we include that as an exhibit?
Yes, it will be, it will be updated as a as a list on the exhibit as the board did receive it for deliberation.
Sorry, Sue, go ahead.
Do you want to qualify that, that in lieu of the construction of a sidewalk across the length of the frontage? The applicant shall provide a gift. I'd put it right in after prior to the issuance of a building permit. In lieu of the construction of a sidewalk across the frontage, the applicant shall provide a gift in the amount.
Yeah, I think that helps make it very obvious what this is for.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
And that way, if at some point in the future, someone says we'd rather build the sidewalk, you go, oh, that's fine. That was a condition of the other. Um, projects that were approved.
In other words, if they decided not to make the gift but wanted to build the sidewalk, this are we covered here?
Go for it. That's. It'd be a sad sidewalk island, but it might encourage more of more of them to get built.
Cindy, you had comments?
Yeah, um, I'm just not sure what direction to go up or down. Um. So under the, if you want to go up first, I guess, on the findings of fact, under item number. Let's see, again, I'm not sure this should stay in its current form. Um. Number six E, this reference to withdrawal of earth removal application to ensure compliance. Um. Uh, I'm not sure that we. It's not compliance uh, with the earth removal by law. It's that no soils are going to be removed. Therefore, the earth removal by law is not triggered. Is that correct? Is that correct that no soils will be removed offsite?
I'm sorry, um, the condition or the uh, the note that was provided in our site plan actually just specify that. Um, no greater than one thousand cubic yard of material shall be removed offsite.
So again, this is confusing to me in the earth removal by law. There's a reference in section two B. Um. No earth removal without a permit. And then um. It then two C or three C, sorry, allows two hundred cubic yards, provided that no loam is removed. Greater than two hundred cubic yards requires a public hearing. So. Um, this thousand uh, cubic yard trigger doesn't seem to make sense to me. I think it's later in the rules and regs. It's under the exemptions, but um, I think we're in a little bit of a do loop here. So. I guess I didn't think that the earth removal by law is triggered if you're not removing it. Anybody who are, then I think there is a a trigger, so. Got to go back and maybe someone else can clarify that.
Anybody, Alec?
I'm working to pull it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's something I think we need to really clean up that language in both the earth removal by law and the rules and regulations. So I would flag it. Maybe we don't resolve that right now, but I think we need clarification on that. If the applicant is planning on removing soils, then I think we need to understand whether. Um. There is a trigger here. All right, I'll keep going. Finding number eight, um, I just want to understand, it says a waiver is requested to allow fewer than twelve required trades. She's in the park. Should that be in the parking area? Substituting a total of and tw- twenty nine trees. I don't know if that number is still the right number. I think this all sorts of go should go under the waiver section anyway, but. If you want to leave it here, that's fine. I just want to make sure those numbers are right. So you might want to highlight that. Um. Number nine is a reference to blasting. Um, I think we could add some more language about blasting, about notifications. In accordance with the fire department's requirements. Right after the word managed. Uh, indoors or something. And then the next statement, construction phase erosion, that should be its own. Um. I think that's its own finding, correct? That's a separate thought? Or is that related to the blasting?
You want to speak to these? Are these two separate thoughts or one?
I'm sorry. Um. Number nine, where it begins with construction phase erosion and sediment controls, is that shouldn't that be a separate finding?
Number nine? Oh, sorry, construction erosion and sediment controls.
You're you're muted right now.
Uh, yes, uh, on my draft here, I had just separated them. I'm I'm thinking that uh, they might have. Been two separate thoughts before and made it into the same finding. Um, but yes, they are two separate now. Um. Beginning with the word construction phase.
Right.
I have a question on that one. Are you the the blasting? Uh, the waste materials was for their um. Trash removal, and that was the reason why they didn't need a dumpster. So I think. That number nine is still has two different concepts combined. No blasting using perchlorate based materials will occur and shall be in compliance with the fire department's regulations on blasting. And then. All waste. Materials. Will be managed indoors. I would say no. I think that's a separate concept. I think it should be no dumpster is provided, is required. As all waste materials will be dealt with indoors. Is that what everybody else understands?
Well, we have a section about refuse in general, right during.
Well, but construction waste materials wouldn't be managed indoors.
Right.
Some blasting wouldn't be indoors, so that's where I'm confused. Maybe Limhut could give you some clarification on that.
Well, I'm a little confused, um, because we do have a dumpster um, for the site plan.
Oh, we do. Okay, maybe I was thinking of a different site where things were being managed indoors.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that section came from, Ian, so maybe you want to check and see where you got this waste material managed indoors thing? And maybe we need a condition if we don't already about how refuse during during construction. This is what you're talking about, right, Sue?
I'm not sure. I I. Because you couldn't. Put your construction um, waste indoor if the building hasn't been built yet. So I'm not sure what that was ref- referring to.
Okay, so please flag that, Ian, and.
Yep, thank you.
Um, number ten, the fire department has confirmed the centrally monitored system. Um, the fire department also weighed in on a couple of other things. Um, about the turning radius. I believe they signed off on the turning radius, but it sounded very loosey goosey, so. You might want to go back into that correspondence. And make another. Finding relative to uh. Sufficient access and turning radius, et cetera. Um. And the next one about the Board of Health, I was trying to find their comments. I couldn't find them. Um, maybe they. I couldn't find the actual comments. I saw them referenced back in June, but I didn't see the actual comments. So um. I want to make sure those get into the record. And I guess um, provisions for public water supply. I mean, so this is dependent on DEP approval. For public water supply. Um. So we might want to. Note that that is contingent on DEP permit. Um. Then going down by two, this, I don't know, this finding, I don't know that we usually use something like this. The project has re. Been reviewed by the peer review engineer places and found with the noted revisions. But I I'm not sure that, do we ever use that as a as a finding? It just seemed odd to me. I mean, I. Always I want to acknowledge the good work of our engineer, but I'm not sure that we. Do we normally note that as a finding?
I had pulled that from another decision. Um, I had a couple up during it. Um, it's so it's. It has a history, but it definitely wasn't continuous through all of them. I just was trying to uh. Be thorough and include it, and then if it gets struck, it gets struck.
I mean, we want to note that our engineer has signed off on it, but that's sort of the basis for the. The whole project, so. It seems superfluous to me, but. Others might think it's important. Um, number fourteen, again, this is a a finding that I don't think we found yet. Um, so I was a little hesitant to put it here. I think this is a finding that might go under. Um, the correct decision criteria. So I would take it out of this section. Um. Then I had a. Okay, then I had the um, the fire department's findings per that email from uh, July twenty fourth about inside curbing will be KCOB burn. Guard rails on the driveway, all of that. I think those should be included in here. Um. I think four items they flagged in that uh, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five email with Captain Gray. Seems that that ought to be. Identified. Um, I think we should put something about the view from Steel Farm as a. Some kind of a finding that, you know, if the board agrees that. It's not going to be visible. It's been sufficiently mitigated, but some language on that. Uh, from the trail rather. Um. And I'm maybe I'm repeating myself. There were several Board of Health comments, public water supply, industrial maze waste management. Sewer system compliance. Wood waste handling, blasting material restriction, stormwater detention, construction impact mitigation. So you might want to go back and pull all those from the Board of Health comments and make sure those get in there, either in the conditions. Section probably, not in this section. Um. And then uh. Okay, we talked about the one eleven trail fund. Uh, we should also have a condition or some reference that um, contingent on receiving a Whitlins permit from Conservation Commission.
Ian, I do believe that's in here, correct?
In the findings or the?
Conditions. Number three, prior to the. Building permit, the applicant owner shall receive an order of condition.
Do we want to make some statement about the replication, Sue? Is there? Um.
That's all conservation, so once they get their permit, they've got it.
All right. Um. I I think that's all I had. That's all. Thank you, guys, but the again, I I think this thing needs to be reworked in a little more orderly. Fashion too. And you will have placeholders for two point five, point seven then, I as I understand it.
Yes, I've left highlighted notes at the top of that section. In addition to the storm water management criteria.
I'll unmute. I said anything else, Cindy?
Uh, so I got right now.
Okay, Chris or Rich, do you have anything to add? Okay.
Like if we're if we're restructuring a bit anyway, to kind of walk through the. Here's what criteria are. And, you know, that they've been met. I think that'd be helpful to see anyway, and. Um, largely like. How how does this board typically word things? And that's fine, kind of running with that. If if that's a. That might be an easier system to follow of like, here are the boxes that must be checked and, you know, confirmation that they each were or. See conditions, you know, the conditions will make that that happen.
I'm sorry, where are we on the on the reference to the landscaping plan? This is going to be. Did we put it in here that it's going to be submitted subsequent or are we waiting to get a submission?
Yeah, so we'll update the language of this condition here. And Rebecca did provide the marked up con- the the marked up version already, so we can add that to the list of exhibits if it isn't in there already.
So Alec, did you understand what I meant about just having the files all sort of in one? Listing maybe on the current projects.
I'm I'm just going to ask Mary to to go ahead and to to go and get ahead of this, what she does after the decision is rendered. Because the exhibits tend to change right up until the date we change it. Um, she takes everything, makes a copy of it, and then puts it in the exhibited order. I'm just going to ask her to do that ahead of time and provide that back to everybody on the website. So that way, when you look at the decision, you say you see E one or whatever the corresponding might be. You then just look on the website and you'll click on E one and it'll be the document referenced.
Okay, I mean, I guess that's one way, even just the laundry list, as long as everything's labeled appropriately. It's just going back and forth to, you know, letters that have been modified and addressed. It's just really. Hard to. Follow the chain. The way it's currently structured.
Okay, um. So unless we have any additional comments, I imagine we are seeking a motion right now.
Um, where we are outside the sixty five days, all extensions do require the consent of the applicant. Um, Limho, would you accept the continuation to seven thirty five P M on uh. Thursday, October thirtieth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion to continue the public. Alright, thank you. Uh, Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion to continue the public hearing to 7:35 PM on Thursday, October 30th.
I have such a motion.
Does it make sense um to push it out? We have the Campanelli Open Space Conserv- the Open Space Con. Commercial Development Permit that night.
Where you have already canceled your meeting of November 3rd. Um, I don't think uh, I I don't think that's practical. I I think the the work we've asked here, it'll it'll take a a little lift, certainly from the planning department to to finish wrapping up this decision. But we will commit to doing that in time this week. So you have a week to review it ahead of your next meeting.
I believe that meeting was supposed to be dedicated to that and only that. Purpose.
Can we slide this first? Because it should be relatively quick compared to the open space one? Or can we not do that since we already made the open space 705?
You can always make this 704 PM if you want, but.
Well, I don't know that that's fair to the other applicant who Cindy is right. We dedicated that meeting to their application.
I mean, we added a meeting for that purpose. So I I'm a little hesitant to load it up with other other things.
I would like to get, you know, this this applicant a decision because it's not. Doesn't feel like it's as heavy a lift.
I I have no problem um being in second in line. Um. Uh, I think I think it's fair of a schedule. A meeting has been kind of allotted for for a certain project already.
It may be kind of a late night, so apologies well in advance.
Oh, not a problem. I'll I'll be on vacation, so it'll be Bruce from our office.
My gosh.
Not your problem, so that helps.
So what's our meeting schedule in November, the 17th, not before the 17th in November?
Correct. You originally had November 3rd and there's a November 17th. Um, at the last meeting, the board chose to cancel their November 3rd meeting, um, since we were going to do a back to back in this case.
Or we could do the 17th.
Right, why not we do it on the 17th?
Board members.
When's the um Beaverbrook?
30th.
It's the 30th.
It's a Thursday, the 30th. We pushed it up for them.
Alright, okay.
And then we have a meeting on the 17th would be the other next option.
Yeah, we skipped the third because we were doing 30th.
Alternatively, and I will not be able to attend. Um, you could reactivate your November 3rd meeting for exclusively this.
Can't. Sorry.
Alright, so the 17th.
Okay.
Lim Hut, would your client accept an extension to the 17? I don't think we have a choice, so we do. Thank you. Uh, Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion to continue this public hearing to 7:35 PM on November 17th.
We'd like to make a motion. Thank you, Rich.
Second.
Okay, moved by Rich and seconded by Cindy.
Before we vote, Alex, do we have anything else scheduled for the 17th? If we have something, right?
You have 984 Mass Ave scheduled.
Okay, sorry Rebecca, go ahead.
Um, so uh 984 is 705.
That's correct, yes.
And uh, maybe we want to put this application, maybe we can't do that. I don't know, can we?
There's there's nothing that prohibits it. You certainly could put this first in order, especially where um that will probably be a more robust item. Um, we would just schedule this for 7:00.
Okay.
I mean, just I would put it after the 984. Let's give it the time that it needs.
Okay, uh, so 7:35. We we have that. We have the motion and we have the um. Second, so as I see you, um, if there's no more discussion, Rich Skizardi.
Thirty.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz I.
Chris Downey.
Downey I.
And Werner I. Thank you so much for spending your time with us tonight again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you need me for anything else?
Uh, we might need to.
Yes.
The enclave.
Okay.
Update. I think we'll just move that up right now because I know there's a number of people on the phone likely for that discussion. So. Maybe we can roll into that first. Alec, take it out of order.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll um, I'll jump in. So uh, the board um, or board members, Sue Carter, myself. Have received a variety of correspondence from the homeowners association, um, including a punch list of various things that they. Um, that they consider. It appears a civil engineer might have been brought out on behalf of their team to evaluate some items. Um, some of those items are civil complaints between themselves and their home, between themselves and their home builder. Um, some of them do extend into the rights of way, the sidewalks, et cetera. Um, so Sue and I had briefly pre briefly. Discuss the punch list um and pare down the things that might be within. Um, Sue and I are going to arrange a time to. To figure out how best we can address these um and make our own evaluation if necessary. Um, additionally, the board did request or receive a request earlier this morning. Um, I do not know who exactly was included on it, but I'll pull it up to. To give reference, um, a member of the homeowners association directed a request to the to the board. Asking that you require uh town staff provide notification, um, should the applicant file for any forms of relief. Um, from any uh state or otherwise uh permit mechanisms or agencies, whether it be. The Architectural Access Board, uh, the State Building Commission, SDP, effectively the the catchall. Um, I will note in that regard, it's always our practice if we catch it, if we see it. Um, but we don't always receive notification of those things. I will note, um, in so in many cases, those are filings made directly with the state. Um, and the town only finds out as a courtesy if we're lucky. Um, so I unfortunately I can't commit firmly that we will provide notification if we ourselves are not going to receive them. Um, but um, the the board is certainly receiving a variety of correspondence from the HOA. Uh, that allude to uh many things that they see as incomplete in terms of the project itself. Um, as I have previously discussed with the board, um, until their permit expires, it is not appropriate for us to discuss. Uh, use of the bond, however you do still hold a bond. Um, for certain elements of the project as listed in their original breakdown. Um. I'll take a pause there. I know Sue has been out a couple of times to to look at um some work on removal of the construction access road. Um, and the. The dissatisfaction we had on the remediation, but Sue, I'll let you speak to that if you have anything additional to share.
Um, I I did hear from Jim at LEC wanting to know the status update. Uh. They were making adjustments to the restoration area and I deferred that to conservation. Um. I did go out on the site last week and determined that uh. There was no damage from the rainfall last week. Everything seemed to have been contained so that I wasn't. I'm not thrilled with the amount of erosion control, but there was no uh erosion evident. Um. I had noted that there was a storage. It was like a construction box and maybe a snow blower or something like that. Attached to the front of a a vehicle. That had been removed from the area uh down. Beyond the uh pond next to the water uh treatment area. So. Very minimal movement. Um. What I saw on the punch list from the butters, I was not sure how recent some of those comments were made. Because they weren't necessarily consistent with what I observed. So I, we may need some more information on that, but um. I think the biggest thing for me is the sidewalks. And uh, they haven't gotten any better with time.
Thank you, Sue.
Yep.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, can we just clarify? So I was just looking to see. Um, I know, Alex, you said that permit extension is good through November 25th or something. Uh, although I thought our bond extent, I thought we had given them a sense to September, but notwithstanding what um. Can you just sort of lay out what the expectation is between now and November 25th and um, you know, what the board. May or may not need to do either before or after that?
So there's nothing to be done before then. The applicant has up until that date to file a complete package for you. With you for bond reduction and presumably close out on the project. Uh, the board has previously made the statement when releasing the final certificate of occupancy. Um, that they would not release the bond until such time as the complete project decision had been finalized and finished. Um, it would be on the applicant to provide you that submittal package. Sue and I have previously made firm to the applicant as well. If you're requesting any waivers because you don't feel that uh, you don't feel that the site topography or anything else would allow it. Whether that be to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, Architectural Access Board, et cetera. That's on you to to seek those and provide evidence to us of uh any approvals. Um. If they don't include those in there, then it's presumed they haven't received those approvals. Um, and therefore they are. Out of compliance in the form of their decision with ADA or some other form of compliance.
Any other board comments or questions? Okay, Sue, I think you're able to enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Great. Alright, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, Sue.
Bye, thank you. Good night, Sue. Thank you.
Um, so you touched on recently received uh correspondence, Alec.
I think you have a Rebecca is a hand up who may be in a butter or a member of the association there.
That is, that is Mark Sherman, a member of the uh enclave home enclave homeowners association trustee. At least based on the name, that's my assumption.
Okay, uh, do you want to allow um? Him to be able to speak?
Sure, I will un- ask to unmute.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, who are?
Oh, thank you. I'll I'll be really quick. I just uh on their. Um, expiration, I think you said November 26th. If there are um. Mostly the most egregious things are the ADA uh issues that Sue mentioned. Um, the fixes for those are not going to be very easy. And and uh, the point is, is that. Realistically, I don't think that they would be able to do it without some form of a waiver. Which I don't know why uh they would get a waiver. This is an over 55 community. But I believe by statute, they have 30 days to request an extension. And if they don't request that extension before uh October 26th. They have to reapply for a permit, at which point. Town can put any conditions that they deem necessary. That's that's my statement.
Thank you so much.
I don't know, Alex, if if you're aware of that.
Rebecca, I could respond to that if you'd like, but that's okay. So um, so. By a plain reading, yes, what Mark is saying would typically be accurate. However, um, many planning boards, this planning board included. If the applicant asks for the request of an extension after the deadline, as we've seen, including the Park at Beaverbrook many years later. Um, it's up to the board's discretion whether you want to hear that or not. Um, so you can continue to consider an extension as opposed to an outright. Um, resubmission. I will also note that um, site plan approvals are to a threshold of substantial completion. Um, and we are well beyond the threshold of substantial completion. So to require an entirely new permit at this stage. Would be quite challenging and the board would likely fail on that merit. Um, however. You would be within your bounds to enforce the original permit as you see fit and as needed.
Thanks for providing the clarity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, okay, Alec, um, planners report, you're up.
Okay, um, I will do my best to keep this quick because I do have a few things. I skipped last time. Um, the uh Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission. Um, Metropolitan Area Regional Planning Commission, MAPC, has announced um their DLTA, their TAP grant program. Um, uh, we will later tonight be uh finalizing a date for uh the joint uh master plan update and progress report. Between yourselves and the select board. Um, I I expect this here. I think it's best that we invite them to one of your meetings. As opposed to trying to attend theirs because they will be uh in crunch time for a December town meeting potentially. Um, but uh noting that TAP grant is a major funding mechanism. Um, and as a quick preview and precursor, um, Ian and I are hard at work, uh, potentially scoping out some projects. Um, things like working with the design review board, uh, as well as a housing production plan. Um, of course, those require other moving parts and other pieces, but it's all part of the master plan update. So. Um, we will sync that up so that your uh master plan progress report is prior to the deadline, which is December 8th. They keep making it earlier and earlier, which makes my life a little bit harder every year. Um, we uh have received a request um to release the Priest Lane um subdivision. Uh, bond, uh, so we'll need to uh set a date. Um, I'll be meeting with Rebecca this week to go over your agenda for next week. And determine whether um, that's something that's small enough and reasonable enough to include on the agenda or not. Uh, but uh, that is ultimately the chair's discretion when we place that on agenda. In the meantime. Um, Ian is picking that back up as well as the project checklist to go go through, review, coordinate with Sue Carter. Um, and the board of health to ensure that all the variety of project conditions have been met. Prior to you being uh asked to actually release it. So he's doing that checklist now uh to be released one week prior to uh the meeting that you take it up. Um, as a reminder, your next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 30th. Uh, that was wrong at the bottom of your previous agenda. But thankfully that has no statutory requirements on it. Um, and as a quick heads up for the board, um, and I'm trying to do this as much as possible in advance. Um, I will be away from the office on uh Monday, October 27th, Friday, October 31st. And Monday, November 3rd. Trying to take a little time post MBTA communities, but we are hard at work uh now crunching that up, putting it all together, packaging it up. Our consultant has already been in touch. Um, as scoped originally, our consultant, who's being paid for through DLTA and uh mass community planning funding. Um, is responsible for the submission, but there are uh a few things that we have to do, our typical Form 7, a couple of other notes. Um, so we're working to coordinate those things, but trying to take a little time and get back to my family, but uh, what I couldn't the last three years. So. Glad to have that one behind us. Uh, just wanted to give everyone the heads up. If you do need anything from me. Um, just reach out prior to those dates and I'll do my best to wrap those up or hand them off prior to taking the days individually. Otherwise, um, you do additionally need to set your budget. And I apologize Rebecca that I did not include that on this agenda. Um, your budget, uh, last year you moved to level funded. I know there was some discrepancy on town meeting floor, but it was submitted as a level funded budget. Um, at your next meeting on Thursday, I recommend uh I simply open up the forms. Ultimately though, if the board uh is in favor of level funding again, uh, the chair has the discretion to submit that individually. Um, so we could also discuss that briefly now, but because it's not listed, we can't take any action. Um. That's what I got. That's a whole bunch of stuff. My apologies. I'd recommend we take up a brief discussion around the budget. And whether you want to discuss it next week, or if you want the chair to simply submit with me a level funded budget.
When you talk about level funded, as you noted, there was some discrepancy on town meeting floor. Um, and I've been hearing some talk about. Um, from other committees wanting to reduce our our budget. Um, and I'm I'm. Concerned because we were trying to spend this year's consulting budget. And we wanted some more traffic information. Uh, I think we're holding out for some of that and that's sort of. Time is ticking on that. Um, so I want to understand what, when you say level funded, what are we talking about? What about?
Yeah, so um, my recommendation to the board is you submit at the full value of what was in the budget uh last year and this year. Um, I did not do a good enough job clarifying this on the floor of town meeting, but part of the reason that you're not spending that budget anymore. Um, is because. Not to toot my own horn, I'm good enough at my job that your applicants pay for these things now. Um, gone are the days where you've had to shell out money to hire an attorney to to figure something out or pay for an additional review. Since my tenure, the applicant has paid for almost every one of those expenses. That is an emergency line item. It's there to protect you in cases where an applicant might not be willing to pay for an extra expense. But you need it in order to be able to render a decision that you might not have arbitrary approval authority over. Um. And that is something that needs to be protected and preserved. And that's something I'll say to any board and committee who questions it. You need to have a protection where you as a planning board don't have a. You need to have a protection where you, as a planning board, don't have a revolving fund to draw on, which is another common mechanism. Um, this is a, this is a catch-all budget line item. Um, to that end, yes, it's being taxed, but it is being returned each year to the free cash. Um, I would be uncomfortable leaving you open and, and vulnerable without it available. Um, but I'm not afraid to say that the reason it's not being spent is my fault, let's call it, but it's for a good purpose, we're getting the applicants to pay for these things, you don't have to pay for them anymore. We've got the accounting to show it, that the prior to, prior to me coming on board, that budget was getting tapped pretty regularly.
Man, I'm, I'm not sure that's a hundred percent accurate, we, again, we were, we got a traffic study done and we talked about having some additional work done on the traffic study. Um, so that would be a, a budget item that I would assume you, you can't get from an applicant, it's a town, you know, expense. Um, we also had in the past, you know, used some technical expertise on, um, hazardous materials handling, um, you know, that was a, a specific application really, that was probably before you were here. Um, you know, so I'm very much in favor of keeping the, I think it, and we, we've talked about dollar amount, I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, and if that is the amount, I would very much want to keep, keep it at that amount, but I want to make sure there was a little bit of, um, I don't know, something, something occurred prior to, uh, uh, last time, I don't want to see that happen again, I'd like to, you know, ensure, and I know we're not taking a vote tonight, but I want to make sure that seventy-five hundred stays in our budget, because we do have technical expertise that we've been trying to tap into, been trying to spend that money, but, uh, for some reason, it hasn't gotten spent.
Rebecca, do you just want to go ahead and place that on, um, on the agenda next week at the end?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, thank you.
Yep, that is prior to, and I made a note here on my planner's report, that I don't forget it the next time we meet, and my apologies, but I did not remember that.
Okay, any other discussion on that at this moment? Okay, let's roll into committee reports, uh, Chris, Community Preservation?
Uh, sure, basically just meant to review the, the applications that were submitted and they all look like they might apply, so we'll go deeper.
Thank you, uh, nothing for Design Review Board, um, EDC?
Yep, um, we had, the biggest thing is we had the Village for a Day event on Saturday, um, which, uh, demonstrated, uh, and Ian, thanks to Ian, uh, who did just a tremendous effort in pulling all that together and spent, uh, some time, a lot of time there on Saturday. Um, I, we had, I'm estimating over two hundred people kind of gathered at different parts, it, it was a four-hour thing, it's over the course of the time at different times. So it really demonstrated the walkability from the Middlesex Bank Plaza up to Town Hall and over to, uh, Stowe Road, the twenty-five Stowe Road, the, um, the historic building there. And, um, you know, we had, there were a lot of, uh, businesses, the local businesses that were involved. Um, I talked to two friends, Chalk at Lala, and she had a great, great day of business and uh, it was just, it was a good, it, I think that, uh, the feedback was, um, people really resonated with the walkability of the day, and that seemed to be a key, like, that was probably forty percent of the, like, comments at the table I worked as to what's important to people um, is walkability, and we demonstrated it, I mean, we had the crosswalks are all brand, the, the state painted new crosswalks in, they put crosswalk signs in at Middlesex Bank, at Town Hall, and at the school. So, um, and we did have, uh, we had extra police coverage, trap, you know, traffic can, or pedestrian traffic control at two locations. But it was a, it was a good event, so, um, I think there's some, we're gonna, we're collecting data, both input from businesses as well as the feedback, and I think that can feed this group's, um, this board's efforts in terms of how we think about, you know, our zoning around our village district.
Thanks, Rich.
Yep.
Um, I was just looking for Mark White, he's, looks like he dropped off the call, um, does anybody, there's Magic, has they met, have they met, Alec, do you know?
Um, I can't speak to Magic, however, um, the MAPC, um, council meeting is, uh, coming up, I just actually put that on my own calendar, uh, for next Wednesday, um, so I will be attending on behalf as the town's primary. Um, there's a chance that Mark will be attending that as well, but the Fall Council meeting, I believe, is typically an award recognition, um, not so much a, an exercise or learning opportunity, so.
Uh, Water Resources, Cindy?
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow night, um, and, uh, just an update from Les, that, um, Acton Water District submitted a, uh, Water Management Act Grant Application in support of a regional water supply resiliency and stream flow protection study. Um, the proposals, I'm just going to read this, the proposed study will seek to develop a regional strategy to strengthen drought resiliency and protect ecological health in the Merrimack Conk- and Concord River Basins. So, um, Acton is sort of taking, is spearheading this, but several communities, um, are, are sort of banding together on this grant, and, uh, they asked Foxborough to write a letter of support as well. Um, they're looking at all sorts of different regional water strategies, including possible connection to the MWRA, um, which is something that some of the other water entities are, are looking at, so, um, Box, Les wrote a, uh, a letter in support of, um, you know, getting grant funding for this particular study, which would be conducted by Weston and Sampson. So I don't know, that was, just went in fairly recently, so I don't know when we'll hear, but, um, it's a pretty large, regional-wide study, but you know, Les and the others have been meeting with the Acton Water District and Littleton Water, so sort of stay apprised of what they're doing at the regional level. Um, should there ever be a need or an opportunity to connect, to interconnect at different locations beyond what we're doing today with Littleton, so that's an update there.
Thank you. Um, and the BLF has not met since our last meeting, but we're scheduled, I think, on the fifth of November, um, to meet again. Um, general business? Scheduling the master plan progress report?
Yes, so, uh, looking ahead at the calendar, um, as I said, the deadline for submitting an application for TAP, and my anticipation is that this year we'll be building off past success, potentially submitting more than one. I think, uh, there's a lot of opportunity here, and I think we, we do have a good chance. Um, I, that is due December eighth, so I would recommend we use, uh, some time on your December first meeting. Um, December first would give us one week to incorporate any board members' comment, feedback um, between both boards as to any additional applications, any further. As you'll see in our recommendation section, as we do each year, we'll call out specific applications that we think are viable and competitive for submission. Uh, that would give us a full week. Um, if you do select December first, then the deadline for boards and committees to respond will be November twentieth. Um, that would give us, uh, that would give us Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to prep everything before Thanksgiving, um, and then we would get everything out the door to the board. Um, so you would have the, the long weekend plus a couple of days to, to review and consider.
Cindy, any comments, folks?
Nope, that's good.
Okay.
That's your work.
Yeah, sounds good, Alec.
We will invite the select board to your December first meeting, I would just recommend, since we're doing it as a joint portion, um, they don't have a meeting scheduled that night, but makes sense for them to come first on the agenda, so I'll hold that at seven oh five P M, if that's acceptable.
That's fine, yeah, thank you. Um, future articles for consideration? We want, we, we keep this on the, the, the agenda every, every week, just if we want to discuss it, but it's, of course, ten twenty-one, so.
So, yeah.
We're all going to discuss it, right?
I'm just curious whether the select board are really, are they really, I think they're meeting tonight to talk about whether they're going to, uh, have a December town meeting or potentially push it out to January. Um, and I don't know if we would bring any articles anyway, but just curious.
Not much time.
That was anything.
Unless it gets shifted, right?
I believe they were closing the warrant tonight, so I, I don't believe there's the opportunity to submit anything further. Um, I will just briefly note, I, I remember the board had asked at the last meeting um, that we prepare a backwards-looking, uh, or backwards-working calendar. Uh, given the action that was taken on that final article at, uh, Fall Town Meeting, um, I do just need some guidance as to a date range, and then I can provide you a ranged and scale, but apologies, that wasn't ready for tonight, I just need more information from the administrator's office before I can prepare that calendar for you.
That's great, thank you, Alec.
So I'm sorry, do we know whether there's a December or a January town meeting before we move on?
I do. Um, from a text message I received, it was moved to January.
Okay.
Do you have a date, um?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we, if there's something we need, then it sounds like it'd be very tight, but there, January's better than December.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, that time of night, um, if I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, I think Cindy came in at it first, Cindy, do you want to second, Rich?
Sure, I'll second, I'm having a major internet stability issue, so.
No worries, no worries, yeah, the weather's been crazy today. Moved by Cindy, seconded by Rich, uh, as I see you, Rich Kizardi.
Kizardi, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Chris Doughty.
W, aye.
And Rebecca Werner, aye, um, thank you all so much.
Have a great night, guys.
Thanks.